I'd like to call our special meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please? Butcher.
Absent with prior notice.
Krusen.
Here.
Frye.
Here.
Graham.
Absent with prior notice.
Livia Wright.
Here. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're on to item 3.0, approval of agenda. May I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing, none, or vote?
Krusen.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye. Motion carries. We're on to item 4.0, open forum. Do we have anyone signed up? Probably not, because it's just the charter. Okay, then we will move on to item 5.0. We have one action item on the agenda. May I have a motion for the approval of the off-cycle charter application review?
I move to approve the attached resolution regarding charter school application, off-cycle application review.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing, none, or vote?
Krusen.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye. Motion carries. We're on to item 6.0, adjournment of the special meeting. May I have a motion, please?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing, none, or vote?
Krusen.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Livia Wright.
Aye. Motion carries. Special meeting is adjourned at 6:32. We are going to give Carrie a minute to switch the recorder so that we have the two meeting recordings
So we are ready to start our work session, and our first item is the safety and security report with-
Watson, Director of Safety and Security. Tonight, we're going to do a little something different than we normally do. I'm going to throw a bunch of statistics at you, both in district, well, no summaral in district, and I've got some compares. Before we do that, kind of wanted to give you an update on our SCAT initiatives. As you know, we have been meeting with a group of individuals named the SCAT, the Enhance Security Community Advisory Team, and we are talking about different projects, and these were the ones that came out of last year's session that we brought before you, previous to this meeting, and so I kind of wanted to give you an update on where we are. So the first one you see up there is the Blue Point. If you recall, that is the pool stations that are similar to the fire alarm stations. Once activated, it'll send an alert through the building to let them know that the building is in crisis and they need to lock down, and simultaneous to that, it will also reach out to 911 and alert numerous people via text. The security film, I don't want to talk too much about this, but just know that it is in progress, and it'll be complete. Project will be complete over fall break. We only have one zone left to go out of all the zones, so that's some good progress that we've made, and I'll just leave it at that. Radio communications enhancements, and I should note that the security film and the radio communication enhancements, funding for those projects came from the grant that we were able to secure through the state of Colorado earlier in 2019. So the radio communications enhancements, what we were able to do with those, that funding, is we were able to purchase approximately 15 radios per elementary school to get them away from using the smaller Talk About-
Radio Shack-style radios that tend to have a lot of interference with them, and so we were able to upgrade them to a much nicer, more stable radio that is actually able to be put in with this bigger district radio, so they're able to talk to each other. The last two, the armed security and centralized security, those are kind of works in progress still, right now. The centralizing the security piece would be with the armed security piece, depending on the model that we move forward with as a district. It would be my vision that if we are going to place a firearm in a security officer's hand, that that person should direct, sorry, direct report to the Director of Safety and Security at the district level. So with the centralizing piece, that's kind of what we're talking about, and then there would be a continued decentralized model with unarmed individuals as well. So that's that update. Safe to Tell. So you may have seen on the news probably last week, Safe to Tell did a press release through major news media in the area, and they were talking about how the first month or so of school, they've seen a 75% increase in their monthly tip volumes. Suicide threats are up 235, and, I'm sorry, they're at 235, drugs at 114, and that's just through the first month of school. They say in the red there, it's up over 1,503 tips, so that's a record for the state of Colorado, and I'm going to share some of our own district data here in a minute, and I can tell you, we're right in line with the state. So here we are, the 49 numbers. As I said, we're consistent with the statewide trend. The mental health categories combined are the number-one tip that we receive in the districts. Those four topics that make up the mental health category are right there: suicide threats, self-harm, depression, and welfare checks. Welfare checks, we mostly receive after hours of a student who may display and/or have a conversation with a fellow peer, that they may not be doing too well mentally or emotionally, and someone will make a Safe to Tell, and then we will request law enforcement to go out and conduct a welfare check. Here's our Safe to Tell numbers for the last five years for those four categories. Along the bottom, you'll see the total yearly tips that we have received. As you can see, from '14 to '15 to '18 to '19, we've grown almost 200 Safe to Tell tips over a year's timeframe. But again, getting back to the four categories that make up the mental health, suicide threats, self-harm, depression, welfare, you can see the totals at the bottom, and again, we are just climbing upwards with all of those categories, and you can see the percentages were well within the high, mid-to-high 30s, and even peaked at 40% last year with the categories being mental health-related. I should note that the second and third highest tips that we receive are bullying, followed by drug reports, and that, as you remember from the previous slides, is consistent with the state trends. However, there was one difference in the year of 2015, 2016, child abuse was the number three. I can tell you, and I'm going to get back to this, actually, I'll just give you this number now. Up here, it says the current number year tips was 68 as of 16 September. We are now at 25 September, we're at 86 Safe to Tell tips. I just ran the report. So that's a lot of tips in nine days. You know, we're averaging two a day, a school day, that's quite a bit. And so getting back to the note, in '15, '16, the child abuse was number three. We've actually seen that spike back up this year. So running the numbers just now, the child abuse is right there at number three, four. It's tied with another category, so we're seeing that again. Emergency drills, all schools participated last year, they got all their required drills in. Those drills make up of one fire drill per month, three lockdown drills, which includes the one district unannounced drill, and their two severe weather shelter drills. So as you probably know, we have this system called Ready-Op, and that's where district leaders receive notifications from schools, reference to drills, 911 calls, and other related emergencies. So this year, we wanted to kind of take a look at utilizing the Ready-Op data of our lockouts that we have. And if you're not familiar, a lockout would be called if there is a danger presented to the school property off of property, meaning there's a police chase, and they're near the area, and they're looking for an armed wanted subject, or SWAT may be conducting a takedown of a person's house in near vicinity of the school, and they'll put us into a, or they'll request we go into a lockdown, but our language is lockout. And so here, what you're seeing is numbers, and it's kind of hard to see, but you'll see in 2019, we had 15 real-life or real incident lockouts where we were required as a district to put our schools into a lockout condition. And that's up from five in 2015. 2017, we had a slight dip, and then you can see there's pretty much a steady climb the other years. There's really nothing to be gained from that other than just keeping you abreast of that we are having these continue to happen, and I would bet to say that that's going to continue the trend this year. So we put this slide in here, because we are seeing a spike of the vaping awareness, not only in our community, but nationwide, so I'm not going to click on any of these links, but there is local in Denver and national links to stories about vaping up here, and you can feel free to click on them in your notes or your packets to read them. But we are consistent with all our school districts. We are feeling some pinch, if you will, of vaping incidents on the rise, and you're going to see some stats here. So in 2015, we had 27 vaping incidents. 2016, 55. And in 2017, 59. And these years are year into year. We don't have last year's data. I wasn't able to pull that yet. But you'll see there in 2018, 133 vaping incidents. And when I say vaping incidents, this is where a student was caught in possession of or actively using a vape e-cigarette-type device, Juul, something like that. So these next slides you're going to see are stats that I got from the Department of Justice website. It's in right there. Whoa, that was quick. It tracks students' arrests, summons, tickets. Basically, every law enforcement agency in the state of Colorado has to report to the Department of Justice any arrests and/or summonses that they give to school students. And so I have three years' worth of data of that, and the big number that I want you to see, and you can go through again using your packet and see all the graphs, but in this 2017, 2018, and we don't have 18, 19 yet, that has not been placed into DOJ's website, there was 75. And you can see on the far left there, it says there was three arrests and 72 summonses. I can tell you, as a former law enforcement officer, they're all arrests. Doesn't matter if you're a full custody arrest or summons, it's all one in the same, and it's considered an arrest. But they break it out by full custody, where you're actually handcuffed, and then 72 would be released on the summons. So there's 75. There's more data. It breaks it down to the different categories: marijuana, solids, drugs, trespass, alcohol, weapons, fraud, stuff like that. 16, 17, we had 77. And again, pretty consistent with the arrests and the summons, and it's similar. You're going to see weapons, marijuana, stuff like that, trespassing. And then in 15, 16, I think it says 59 up there, and again, similar with the arrests and the summons data. And same, thefts, sex solids, weapons offenses. So the next one, this is the last, last bit of information I'm sharing with you tonight, is our district threat assessments. And why this is important is although the numbers are similar from years past, we're seeing an increase this school year already. Same with our Safe to Tell tip numbers are up. We're seeing an increase in our threat assessments, as well as our mental health suicide assessments. And so that's the most important takeaway. We are looking at revamping. Safety and Security now owns the threat assessment process, and Dave Pratt, my expert in this area, is going to be kind of taking a hard look at this criteria and this data and see if there is some revisions or things that we can do to make it easier on our school teams that have to do these assessments. Not that we're going to change our criteria and our expectations, but we want to try to make it a more streamlined process for them, because they are very, very busy inside their schools, and we recognize that. And so the numbers to take away from here, you have the screeners, low to high. So in 2017, 2018, we had 26 screeners, 120 in 18, 19, and then you see the numbers for low to high. The one thing to take away for the lows, that would be like your playground incident where a student says, "I could just kill you," or, you know, something, they just have that outburst, but there's really no intent and motive or opportunity after a screener or after an interview's done with that student. And the high would be someone that may have drafted a hit list of some sort or had some kind of plan written down. They had more expansiveness to their thought process, and you can see we had five in 2017, 18, and then eight in 18, 19. And safety and security is heavily involved with those cases, as is an SRO. That's the mandate.
In regards to Safe to Tell, have you found it to be a very helpful tool that's been giving you opportunities or further assist you all in safety and security within the district?
Yes, sir. Some unofficial stats for you. Within the last several years, we've saved approximately 10 students' lives because of Safe to Tell. We actually had a save last week with a securely alert that we received. A young person overdosed and was in ICU and in a medically induced coma for several days and is in residential now. So that's a save, even though it was through securely and not Safe to Tell. But getting back to the previous 10 that I was talking about, similar. They were found in the act of attempting to complete suicide, and their lives were saved. And so I highly believe in it.
Sure. Rachel, question for you. Let's hope you can say. By and large, with the students that you know and have come into contact, have they found Safe to Tell to be, A, do they know about it, and B, have they been able to utilize or have they been able to share? Even not saying, oh, hey, I called Safe to Tell on something, but do they, is there an awareness of Safe to Tell?
I would say there is an awareness, because it is talked about every year on every class. We have a class meeting for Safe to Tell. I'm seeing more of an increase with students who are saying, like, yes, I would save, use Safe to Tell if they whatever need to. I think students actually more struggle on the part where they're talking to a friend, and they don't know how to continue that conversation with a friend, is that where they struggle with more.
That's some really good feedback, Rachel. I really appreciate that, because from your lens view, that's important, right? Because that tells me, as a district leader, that there's, that's work that we need to do to help coach you through that, because we recognize that since Safe to Tell is being so highly used and our numbers are up, we need to be your partner and help you with that, and we'll get to work on that, I can promise.
When we look at those statistics, that's, total district is not broken out by coordinated versus charter, correct?
That's correct. That's total district. There are some charters in there. All the charters are in there, but I can tell you, out of those numbers, it's a very small percentage that is actually charter schools. If I had to rank them, if you would like me to, I can give you that information.
No, I just was curious, because we have a goal in there, too, and so I didn't know if that impacted some statistics. So when we look at, you know, where it breaks it down by race, for example, and you're looking at, you know, how do those numbers compare district-wide, you know, and they have ethnicity distribution, and then you can actually compare incident ethnicity as well, right? And sometimes knowing where those summons and arrests occurred, or where some of the other things they're tracking occurred, can explain if there's a discrepancy, and sometimes there don't. Even within our coordinated schools, sometimes there's a difference just because of geographic locations. So sometimes, we just have to be careful about how we think about that data.
For sure.
That's my point, because it is broken. It does break it down, and it's very easy to calculate the percentages on all of it, because I did it all on myself. So thinking through what drives that's an important thing to keep track of.
It's easily accessible. Anyone can access the information online. It's just like the CD data in school districts. It's right there.
Right.
And just a quick point about clarification. You said that the charter schools are included in the stats. That included the law enforcement stats that you received from the state. I thought you were referring to Safe to Tell in particular.
I was explicitly looking first at law enforcement, but then also Safe to Tell.
So I don't want to stand up here and tell you 100% yes. It would only be an assumption of mine that it is, since they are within the boundaries of the school district, that they do include those. But I can tell you off the top of my head, knowing the arrests that do occur in a district, that there are not many at the charter schools.
Thank you for your work on behalf of SCAT as well, ways that you continue to involve community members in other parts of our school district to make that happen. So thank you for continuing on that. Sometimes that's always going to be something that's going to be put in front of us, and it's not just something you tidy up and finish and say, oh, we're done with that. That's kind of an ongoing thing, so thank you for your work on that.
Well, I appreciate you saying that, but it wouldn't be possible without Pedro and Peter. They are great advocates of school safety and security. I'm very thankful for both of them.
And if I could make one more quick comment on this. As Dave said at the beginning of this presentation, it's a little different format compared to what we've done before, what he's done before, what the district's done before. I asked him to take a look at this in terms of how we could bring more data analysis into this forum. I think we're going to continue to tweak it as we move forward, certainly looking forward to feedback from the board if this is effective for the purpose of understanding how the district is doing in terms of safety and security. We have both the initiatives that are taking place with SCAT and things that we're doing, but then there's also a question of what actual data is pointing towards in terms of the trends that we see within the district and heightened awareness. So if you have any feedback on that, please feel free to let us know, either myself or Dave, and we'll try to continue to tweak how we go through those information.
Rachel.
I just have one more question. I was on the student panel during the summer for safety and security, and something we discussed about was lockdown drills during inconvenient times, such as lunch or during on-passing period. I was wondering if that was a future initiative, if any more thought has been with you guys for that.
Great question, Rachel, and yes, it is. We're actually going to be discussing drills in the SCAT meeting tomorrow that we are having, and I'm happy to say that in one of our most recent Blue Point tests at one of our schools, I can give you a school if you want, but we did it at lunchtime, and it went very well. We heard you loud and clear, and we are so appreciative of you and your fellow peers for joining us for our next summer training, and we see that you've been growing even more, so thank you.
Also, thanks to Dave, Dave, and Bob.
Absolutely.
And there is some push from some directions to try and unseal some of the anonymity on Safe to Tell. I don't know if you've heard some of those discussions, some of it's even from some of the CASB resolutions. As one person thinking through the system and thinking through teenagers, I personally think it would be an incredibly bad idea to break the anonymity, even though it makes it really hard when someone's made a false claim to track that person responsible. Ultimately, if we look at the number of tips coming through and the number, you know, you said we had 10 saves. I would argue that probably every kid you did a suicide assessment on was a save, because having the conversation should did something for that child. You might have been able to assess and say, we don't think they're a serious risk, but yes, they're a depression, well, you kept them from moving down the path to becoming a serious risk. Or we think they're a serious risk and they haven't attempted yet, that's still a save. Both of those kids are still saved, because it red flagged the situation and allowed that child to start to access help before they got to the point that they had to be put in an ICU for an overdose. So I'd say the saves are probably far higher, especially given the rates that we know exist in our state and our county, and so I think it would be important to gather that information from students as well, because what we're seeing, basically, the fact that those tip numbers are going up, to me, I think some people may read it as, oh, my goodness, the situation's gotten worse. I think personally, it's more, there's more awareness about the importance of it. We're talking a lot in our community about mental health with our kids and with adults, and so now it might not even always be a kid who's called Safe to Tell. It might be a kid who told a parent they're worried about their friend, and the parent calls Safe to Tell and turns it in to have that child, so that there's some way to access and get help, and they might not be comfortable calling, like, you know, if you read anything on Facebook, you kind of decide that maybe you don't want to contact a parent personally for some of these things, because of the way people seem to react. So I think it's become the primary vehicle for people when they're concerned about others to take action. And so I, rather than being concerned that those numbers jumped up, I'm encouraged by it, because we know the problem already exists, and we were missing so many kids. So the problem is, how do we make sure we have adequate resource to provide that support? But I would also ask everyone to pay attention to these conversations that are trying to break that anonymity, because as one person, I think the headache of having someone use Safe to Tell to prank their friend and try and get them in trouble, and the waste of time for the police officer for that, is not nearly as concerning to me as missing kids who really would be in crisis, because people have decided it isn't safe to call.
Yeah, I don't really see that happen, and if it does, I believe there would be a very high threshold for breaking that anonymity, and I believe if I follow it correctly, there will be some say-so by the school districts, and I can say that I would not advocate for, you know, doing that at all.
It just got on my radar, because it showed up as a CASB resolution. So I figured we better get it. We, as a community, can start sending a message of we want this protection for our community and our kids, because their lives are worth the extra time and the headache of the fact for the kid who calls him a fake bomb threat, or, you know, claims a friend has a weapon that doesn't, or something. The kids who we can savor for the long.
I'm very, I'm very encouraged by the fact that a lot of students are actually doing screenshots now and adding them to the Safe to Tell tip. With the app technology and everything, we're really starting to see that bravery of those students who says, you know, I know my friend sees me screenshot that Snapchat, I don't care. And so I'm very encouraged by that, because that means we're doing the right thing and they're doing the right thing.
It is a tool, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Tell the board members, chief officers. My name is Jack Patrullo, Director of Transportation, and this is the Transportation Semiannual Operations Update. The agenda shows that I will update you on the fleet age, bus assignments, and our projected mileage over the year. I will cover our current staffing and what we require, we, required to operate. I'll go over our current, our current and past ridership numbers, along with our current and past revenue information. I'll speak about our on-time arrivals and some positive adjustments we made to report them more accurately. I'm also going to inform you of our biggest challenges and how we're planning to move forward as a department. This first graph shows our second-year implementation of our bus replacement and growth plan, with the goal of keeping our bus fleet no older than 15 years old. We have reduced the number of our oldest buses while continuing to grow the fleet. The new buses we are receiving are continued improvement in bus safety, technology, and efficiencies. All of our new buses come standard with anti-lock disc braking systems, which work better and are cheaper to maintain. They are equipped with a collision mid- They are equipped with a collision mitigation system, which automatically applies the brakes to potentially prevent a forward collision. They have a following distance alert system that informs the driver how many seconds ahead of them an object is. They also have an electronic stability control system to help drivers mitigate rollovers and loss of control situations like a bad road condition. We have also ensured all of our new buses come with seatbelts, and we added a secondary flashing stop bar on the back of the bus to increase our visibility to other drivers, letting them know we are stopped. The newer buses are also lowering our maintenance and fuel costs, as they do not require as much repair and get on, they also get, on average, about one mile per gallon better than an older bus. Over a million miles, that is a significant reduction in fuel usage. This slide shows how we assign our yellow buses and our growth in routes over the last three years. A lot of our growth comes from boundary changes that occur when we build new schools. We are currently able to support students who opt to remain at their current school for one year. So this mileage and diesel usage slide shows our past actual miles driven and gallons of diesel used, while also showing what we are projecting to use this school year. We base this number off actual route mileage accrued in August, along with field trip projections based off of past year's data. So this graph shows our current and required number of drivers and parents. As you can see, we are currently 19 drivers short. Nine of those drivers are relieved driver positions, which we have increased this year after analyzing our attendance rates for the past two years. Of our current 72 drivers, 7% of them are out on an average day for many different reasons. Other than our current two relieved drivers and our AAP drivers, our staff has been assigned a daily route until we can get these driving positions filled. This slide shows our current and past ridership. The ridership count so far for this year is only showing the month of August, and we are projecting a higher count next month. Usually when weather gets bad, it also goes up. Here's a breakdown of August ridership numbers. You can see the asterisks, the 403 unregistered riders compared to the 744 unregistered riders in August of 2018. We attribute this drop to the new fee payment program implemented at the start of the school year. We are also able to reconcile our ridership numbers more quickly to identify those that have not registered to ride yet. This slide, excuse me, this slide shows our fee-for-service revenue for the last few years, but again, only shows our current revenue from August of this year. We've updated this chart this year to include our charter schools, along with our operating schools. This gives us a more accurate picture of our on-time arrival rate for our entire district. Adding the charters gave us an early indication that we were running late at a particular charter school. Because of this improvement, we have already remedied the issue, and expect our on-time rate will get even better next month. It's a lot of work to come up with this calculation, and we didn't have time to update the past years, including the charters. I think by my April update, I'll be able to include them and have all the data for the past years. We have recently reached out to our school leaders. I missed the slide. Okay. We have recently reached out to our school leaders and asked them to send a flyer out with their regular communications to their parents. This flyer contains information to recruit bus drivers and how to become one. We have also asked the PTA to reach out to our communities to recruit drivers or become one. We have been actively recruiting on the streets and at local businesses with our bus that is parked out front and moved around the district for more exposure. Transportation team members are performing interviews and helping folks put in an electronic application right on the bus. We have been attending all of the Pike's Peak workforce hiring events to recruit potential drivers. They have informed us that they are, Pike's Peak workforce has informed us, there are 1 million open job positions available in Colorado right now. Oops, sorry. My, I think I had my last two slides out of order here. Our biggest challenge moving forward is district-wide growth. We have based our projected growth needs off of the student growth estimates we have been using in the district growth planning meetings, which are organized by our Chief Operation Officer, Pedro Almeida. These student growth projections are in five, 10, 20, and 30-plus year increments. We projected our yellow bus needs for that student growth, and then projected our staffing and facility needs from the number of buses needed to support those projected students. At our current growth projections, including our current bus renewal program, we will have 150 yellow bus fleet in the next 10 years. This graph shows the staff needed to support our current and future bus needs, not including the drivers and parents. So, looking at this slide, I should have put annual increments on these, and I didn't. The transportation department is currently running beyond its maximum capacity. Before the start of the 21-22 school year, we will need a minimum, at minimum, another location to securely park and power our buses, and possibly house our employees. Without these growth changes, we may have to lessen the amount of support we currently provide. For next school year, 2021, we are projecting that we will absorb the six extra routes we added this year to support the new schools and boundary changes.
So you're understaffed, beyond understaffed, because your folks who are doing the office work piece are also.
They're very long, yes.
Go ahead.
Back on the total fleet age, I mean, I really appreciate the work that you and Pedro have done to, you know, move the, shift the model from aged buses to not as aged buses. How many of those are leasing vehicles, leased buses?
So, if I remember correctly, we are leasing six a year? Is that right? Oh, boy. It's either six or nine, and I can't remember which. It's six a year, and leases for seven years each, and the replacement plan was for three years. Each lease lasts seven years, and then they were going to lease for three years. I told all of 21 years, I believe.
Online was, two summers ago, we got about 15 buses, and I believe about six of those 15 were leases.
Yes.
And then last summer, we did essentially the same thing. Another 15 new buses, of which six were leases, of the seven-year leases that Jack talked about. So we have to make sure every summer of gaining, of purchasing buses outright, as well as leasing buses, and those both manage to cost into the management fee. Just more out of curiosity, do we have a sense that we would prefer to lease or prefer to own, or have a mixture of both?
Always own.
Yep.
We did the leasing only, we did the leasing only to improve our average age on a quicker schedule. So that's why we're hoping we'll only do it this year, and only do it next year will be the last time we'll add leasing and not ones available to purchase.
And the bus, the replacement plan that both, actually, it was banned, that helped us design that and Brett, evens out that big hump that we're getting right now over time. So it's just a regular bus replacement every year after these initial years.
You bet. Thank you.
Okay, so one other question when we look at where it says not registered for ridership. When it's, is that just kids who got on the bus who didn't scan, or do we know that it is kids who actually, in fact, also don't have a bus pass? Do you know what I mean? So like, here are children, like, some of mine, I bought four of. Thank God you sell them at the schools now, because now I can make him do his chores and earn the five bucks, and go buy it every time he loses it or breaks it. So are those kids who are forgetting their bus pass included in that not registered, or are those truly people who are unpaid?
It is both. So some students have their bus pass from last year, and we are picking all those students up with the bus that they have yet to register so far this year. And then we have students that forget their passes all the time. We write their names down, and we follow up on that list as well.
Okay. Any further questions?
Do you, Robert Carlos, everybody that does work, thank you. No, especially if you're driving around and trying to do your office work at the same time. That's appreciated. It's, you know, it's a weird time. As you've said, Jack, and we all know, when the economy is good, not as many bus drivers. So I don't want the economy to go bad, but we would like a little bit more balance. So thank you for your work, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, so Jack actually has a nice presentation as well, which is the Transportation Policy Review.
Hello again, for the record, I'm Jack Patello, Director of Transportation. I'm here to let you know we have vetted policy EEAG, student transportation in private vehicles, and I am asking the board to repeal this policy for a few reasons. This is the current policy. It basically states a staff member may transport students in their personal car if they have authorization to do so. And that goes on to give school administrators and nurses authorization through a chief officer or designate. This in turn gives authorization to principals to give authorization to staff members, such as coaches, music teachers, and activity sponsors. I'm asking the board to repeal this policy, because it is a transportation best practice not to allow employees to use their vehicles to transport students for many reasons. The first reason, has the employee received proper driving and transporting student training? These are CDE requirements for transporting students. CDE also requires a pre-trip inspection and regular maintenance on the vehicle before it is used. The owner is liable to ensure the vehicle is in safe operating condition. Another concern is that the driver's insurance will be used to cover claims that may occur for any accidents or incidents. Does the driver meet the district's insurability standards to receive additional coverage and support from the district? These standards include past driving records, violations, and accidents, just to name a few. Oops. My final point is the possibility of a one-on-one staff member-to-student scenario, which could lead to misconduct accusations. Please consider the risks this policy opens our staff members up to.
And have we even had staff members using personal vehicles on a regular basis transporting students under this policy?
On a regular basis, no. We have had staff members transport students.
But staff members can also get trained through you all to then sign up the vans here, which is the way that we would prefer they do it, correct?
That's the way we would prefer they do it. We know those vans are safe and that the drivers have been trained.
We should also note that the, last year, Jack put out a request to the school leaders about the impact of rescinding this policy. We also raised the question with the zone leaders, and we received no, finally got zero pushback, to my knowledge. I'll get anyone coming up and saying no, if you want to keep it. We just don't think it's worth it.
Right, and I don't remember it being something that people routinely were given permission to do, even 12 years ago, working in the district. There are more complicated situations where someone may be a staff member and a parent, but acting as a parent then is separate from being district as well. So as long as they're distinguishing between whether they're acting as a parent or they're acting as an employee is the important distinction there. Anybody have any issues? Move these forward then?
Yep, yes.
All right, we'll move those forward for action at the next meeting, please. Thank you, Jack.
All right.
Thank you.
Our next item is meal price increase.
Yes, meal price increases. So we've had, my name is Pedro Almeida, Chief Operations Officer. Done some analysis. Nutrition Services has taken a look at the requirements that we have from both CDE, as well as what we actually require in terms of actually funding our food services program. The first slide shows the meal comparison prices as we look across the region, because this is something that we took into account, as we were considering this question. And you'll notice as we look across the board, that our numbers, our current numbers, which are at the bottom, kind of range, depending on which district you're talking about, is being either a little bit lower, or possibly right at about what we're seeing across the districts in the region. However, we are below what is the USDA annual paid lunch equity requirement that we have. And that's one of the things that we have to keep an eye on as we're looking at food service prices. So we have a recommendation from Food Services, which is, actually, no, it's on the cover sheet, to go ahead and bump it, it's on the cover sheet, to go ahead and bump up the food nutrition services costs, and I believe it was 10 cents for breakfast and 35 cents for lunch. As we're looking at food costs right now across the district, we do see a rising expenditure that's taken place. First, we have the increase in minimum wage. So since Food Services is its own entity, as we, as across the district, have raised the prices due to increase in minimum wage, quite a few of our food service employees are working in that range, or at that end of the pay scale, their wages have been required to go up. So that has the result of increasing our overall food service cost. And then the other question becomes the cost of actual supplies and commodities, looking across the board, and that has also continued to go up as we look across the economy. Put both of those two factors together, if we don't increase food prices, not only are we not in compliance with where we need to be for a CDE requirement, but it also becomes a question that must now start to sacrifice quality in terms of our food service. So do we buy the good hamburger, or do we buy the hamburger that's got a lot of filling in it? And you can just go on and on and on, in terms of where we would have to compromise on our food service preparation costs. Or conversely, do a lot more food that is prepared, pre-prepared, and try to cut staff, which is something we absolutely do not want to do. We want to maintain our food services staff so that they can do fresh preparation in the kitchen, as opposed to reducing the staff and giving them easier things to prepare, meaning packaged things that just get heated up. Brett, did you have anything else that I missed?
You know, the numbers that we're proposing here are what we put into the model. We have a pretty detailed model, that's, you know, per meal, per school, et cetera. We were fortunate that we've had fund balance in this fund, so that we could kind of take more of a wait-and-see approach, especially of the impact of the minimum wage change to this. And if you recall, when Monica presented last month, she was indicating that they weren't able to do any contribution or indirect cost to the general fund, and that's, this is the big reason why. So this is not, this increase would not create indirect cost opportunity. Honestly, it's really just kind of still balance out the program, so it's no longer, no additional erosion of fund balance there.
And when is the last year that we're in the step up for, right, minimum wage is stepping, are we at the $12 yet, or do we have a better?
January 1 of 2020 is the last one. But then it's going to, then it'll continue to increase, but just by inflation. So it's still going to be prescribed increases, but no longer at 90 cent per hour, 10% plus.
So we'll see, it's huge of a hit, but we're going to have to continue to watch this, because probably both aspects of the increase are impacted by that, right?
Yes.
The commodities prices is also impacted by the fact that the labor prices to provide those commodities are going up, because those also typically jump to the lower end of the spectrum. So we're probably going to see both pieces ratchet up. And so I appreciate it being held up, and obviously you need to do it.
Yeah, in the past, you know, we've tried to do price increases like every other year, and so have kind of a two-year hold on it. I would expect that we're going to have to do, that this, putting this increase into effect this year, so after fall break, I think is what we're proposing to do here, that there would need to be another increase for next year, and maybe that increase could get us back onto a two-year cycle going forward, but a lot to see when April's.
So are we good to move it forward?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll move that for action next meeting. Our next item is the district benefit plan change, the design change. Shannon.
I'm Shannon Hathaway, Risk and Benefits Manager. I am here to do a benefit update to tell you how things have been going in 2019, what we would like to do for 2020, and let that happen. So at this time last year, we presented the changes that we wanted to make for 2019 to talk about Anthem's Well Choice program, and trying to put in another option for staff. So what we did is, last year, early in the year, probably around May, we did a full bid, and we had a committee, we had a couple of top choices of people that we really were considering changing our plan to last year. Basically, Anthem came forward and had this, what seemed like a good idea, so I had this idea about this Well Choice program that they had. It would help save money potentially, and it also would keep us with Anthem, which it is really nice. it is really nice to not make a whole change for the staff. Everybody knows that they had Anthem, so they go, we had Anthem again. So we went ahead and went with that plan. Everybody voted on that at the time. So what we came up with is, just to remind you, is kind of like this summary that's shown here. Normal plans, I would say normal, but have an in-network and an out-of-network benefit. So most PPO programs probably have two choices, two tiers. So what happened with ours is we put in this three-tier program. So you still have the out-of-network benefit, but you have Anthem's network, and they summarized it into Well-Choice Programs. So the staff's still got to choose, so they could choose if they wanted to be with the Centura Penrose Hospital, and you could choose if you want to be with Memorial UC Health, which seems like a good idea, because that still leaves the choice, and that keeps their cost down if they stay in Tier One. And so that's kind of what it looks like right now. If you go to Tier One, which is what you chose, then you get the lower cost, and if you go to Tier Two, it's an additional cost. Since we put this into effect for 2019, a lot of things have been happening. And almost immediately, it was becoming clear that Anthem maybe wasn't prepared to administer this program that they came up with. It was their program, and they had been putting it in place for a long time, obviously getting these doctors to sign with these Well-Choice Programs for discounts. But, I mean, it started right away in January. The ID cards came, they came three times. They, some were correct, some were incorrect. They didn't have prescription coverage on them, so people couldn't get prescriptions. And so it was already starting to be really scary. And then as people started calling, just in confusion, saying, "I want to find this doctor that I'm allowed to use in the tier that I chose." I mean, we went through the process, got everybody selected, everybody had picked the tier, it was printed on their card, but they still didn't really, totally, not everyone knew how to use the system. So they would call Anthem. And Anthem just doesn't seem to be able to answer the questions. Their own customer service staff, I've been complaining most of this year about training their own customer service team. I had suggested a dedicated customer service team just for this district, so that when you call in, they know what they're talking about. Because what happens is, obviously, these customer service, everybody has a different Anthem thing, right? So when you call in, it's, they don't know. They're looking up the documents as well. But they're, but they say things to the staff like, "Wow, this is confusing. I've never seen a plan like this," you know? So what we consider to be, you know, maybe innovation and a creative approach is making people kind of scared, like, "What is this program that we've agreed to?" So that's been a big problem. The claims don't pay as they promised they would. At all of the meetings, they said all preventative services, which are supposed to be paid at 100%, you can go anywhere, but that wasn't happening. Then we also have staff just, you know, not using it right. People going to a place that they didn't sign up to see, and then calling me to see why the bill was so expensive, that kind of service. So just that kind of error is happening as well. I mean, it basically can be a full-time job just to track down where you're, I don't want to say allowed to go, because you're allowed to go anywhere, but the cost more than doubles if you go to some of the networks. So you want to stay within your network. So that is turning out to be very expensive for some staff that either are doing it accidentally or are needing to do it on purpose. They're treating in a certain level, and then the treatment that they need isn't available in that network, and so they're having to go outside. So they're having to pay double deductibles, basically. They're having to pay the low tiers, which is not good. And then it's been pretty confusing for new hires to explain it to them, as we just did this new group of new hires. It's been pretty confusing for them. So in about July, I think, was really sure that this was not going to work. We started talking about, what are the choices? Do we, can we stay with Anthem and not have this network choice? Because it's just, for the, for somebody who doesn't do insurance all day, you know, like, I can explain it to people, and I can explain to people. I can't talk one-on-one with everybody all the time. And so it just, we don't want it to be so confusing and hard to use our benefits. It looks like it's a detriment to the staff. So, you know, we're trying to recognize that the plan failure is happening and act accordingly and change it. I've heard the chiefs say, you know, "Fail fast." So we kind of just want to jump on the fact that this is not working well. And by the time that this decision was for sure that this is just not going to work, we really didn't have time to do another full bid. So what we did is went back to our two top carriers from last year. It just, staying with Anthem and not having this Well-Choice was another option, but their prices are a little higher, and I just don't really want to reward them anymore just for the way that this year went. And so I went back to the committee that we had last year, went back to the same two top carriers that we really liked last year, and started talking to them, compared their pricing, did their reference checks, verified that we wouldn't have to have a limited network. We ran comparisons of Anthem's full access network and how that would impact our staff if we switched, and to make sure that people wouldn't have to switch doctors. So whichever tier you're in, if you're in the Centura Penrose tier or the UC Health Memorial tier, you would still, in this new choice, have your doctor. And it would just be the one back-to-normal kind of choice. So UMR is the claims payer for United Healthcare. They're a combined choice, so they were our top choice. And so we've just been working on making that change and writing the new plans, still staying with the structure that our staff has gotten to know with the PPO and the HSA, the high deductible, and writing that. That's what we've been using for several years, and it's been working pretty well. So we want to do a plan design that's similar or equal to what it would be like now if you were in the Tier One plan, and then you just have the full out-of-network like other plans have. So we've just been, I've just been talking to them, working on that, and been trying to go forward with what kind of questions we would have, you know? Switching, there's a lot of switching that has to happen. And just trying to get that going, but we just wanted to, I just wanted to bring it to you and to say, this is what we've been talking about, and see if there were any concerns or questions about switching. It is not my first choice to have to go back to the staff. I mean, we've had Anthem for four years now. We had Cigna for five or six years probably before that. You know, that consistency is nice, because you just know that you have this plan, but there's been enough concern, enough complaints, enough people that are unhappy with it. And even if overall, that's a small number of staff, I don't know how many people are unhappy that haven't actually reached out to me. I only know about the people who have come to me that have been unhappy. And we know that the benefits are a high, you know, value item here to make this a good place to work. And so we want to just, I just want to change it, make it better, and...
Thanks to the committee, and your reflection of saying, hey, let's just go ahead and automatically look at that. I've seen that for the rest of this year is going to be a little difficult and tricky before we roll the UMR, United Healthcare, in place.
Yeah, no, it's a lot of work. I really don't want to take on a change. I'd like a year where we rolled over and didn't make, because moving to this Well-Choice was a huge amount of work. But, you know, it's just, if it's not working for the staff, it's not a great idea. I mean, they're the ones that, you know, we need to have a good value in that benefit for them. So whatever that takes, so we can have a good program, I'm very hopeful that the change will be written really well, so that we can just stay with that program for many years to come, like we usually do, and so people will get used to it again. We are going to meet again to talk about pricing and what the structures look like. I'm hopeful that there won't be huge increases, because I do think there has been some savings with going with this plan, so that's been the one upside. But we're gonna, I'm gonna bring that to you all in the October work session with all the pricing and stuff and changes.
Our next item is new course proposals.
Hi, everybody. I'm Lauren Stewart. I do teach math at Sand Creek High School, but I think the first one that we were talking about is student council. So I am the co-advisor for student council.
And I'm Ally Nicholson. I also do student council with Lauren. This year, we are excited about bringing on the opportunities to offer an honors version to student council. Basically, the kids in our council can choose if they want to be a part of it. We have the best and brightest kids in our school who do just about everything in our school. And basically, what we would like to do is not penalize them for wanting to be in student council. It actually hurts their GPA. Typically, they're in IB courses, AP courses, concurrent enrollment courses, and we do not wait ours, so it actually hurts and doesn't help. We want to show them that we value them, everything that they do, and allowing them to take on the honors project and honor student council. We're really showing them that, like, if there's a problem, like, here's a solution. So we're really just excited to value our, the countless hours they already put in and allow them to get credit for it in addition to their normal grade that they get in the class, so allowing the honors bump for their GPA, so.
And we do our best to grow them as leaders through the different, you know, events that we plan and the curriculum that we already embed in it. But some of our kids, you know, they excel in math, some of the kids excel in English, and others excel in leadership. And we just want to make sure that we are, you know, doing our best to highlight that. So if you guys look at, this is very long, but these are the standards from the National Student Council. So every year, we want to offer this to sophomores through seniors. They would do three of the leadership standards, one active component, either civic engagement or service, and then every year, they have to do a leadership philosophy, just so every year, we can kind of see that they've grown in that philosophy and how it's changed and shaped them. For example, we have a student, Christian Worley. He is organizing a fundraiser for the theater department by having a mini theater clinic kind of thing for K through five students in our zone. You know, he's put together the whole project flyers, you know, they're out to elementary schools. He already has like 26 kids signed up, just, you know, above and beyond what we would normally require of our students. Rachel, your SBR rep tonight, went out and got a grant to kind of increase the positive culture in our school. She chose four bathrooms. She painted these beautiful, you know, urals, yeah, with great sayings on them just to inspire kids, because they're in there every day. You know, you go in the bathroom, it's just white walls. These are like red and blue, and they have, you know, they're vibrant, so, things like that, that I just think is so much above and beyond just the student council force.
That's something that I haven't seen in, like, my regular courses, even as a concurrent enrollment student. And secondly, by waiting this and approving that you want the Point Five, it shows that the Board is behind what student councils do. And I think when we go into student council every day, we're not expecting recognition. We do it to create memories for students. So by doing this, that's a way to show, like, hey, we appreciate your guys' hard work.
Peter, do we have anything similar like this, and any of the other?
No, Sand Creek would be setting a, taking the leadership role, and I would endorse that. It's just coincidental in the timing, but I got to spend time with the Sand Creek Student Council this week. That's a wicked, sharp group of students. And they are excellent, whether we have caught up to recognizing that or not. The point about the disincentive to take student council is real. Students that are really focused on maximizing GPA should not take unweighted courses, or they should minimize the number of unweighted courses. There is another point, however, and you're going to hear this as we walk through our individualized education reporting. We need, as a district, we need to do a better job of identifying and retaining gifted students in high school. And there are lots of ranges of giftedness. You can be physically gifted, or you can be verbally gifted, and you can have general intellectual giftedness. One of the important forms of leadership, of giftedness, is leadership. And so this particular designation could end up being a component that would help us as an early identification system for students who might qualify for gifted status. And that's not as much for the individual student as it is make sure we're programming well for classes of giftedness and different kinds of giftedness. So I'm an enthusiastic supporter of this. It is just a nice coincidence that I got a recent booster shock by spending time with those students, and wholeheartedly endorse this.
I think you have kids that benefit in both areas. And Peter's point on the giftedness piece is important, because it's, the manner in which we identify students who have the general intellectual giftedness, as in verbal and mathematical, is pretty standardized and paper test-based. And as long as the kid is gifted and doesn't have an anxiety issue which causes testing problems, you're going to flag kids correctly in those areas. But we miss a lot of the other categories that are identified, because we don't have a paper test to administer to say who is, you know, who's gifted in leadership, who's has physical giftedness. We don't have a great way of identifying, and we're working on that. But that's true statewide and nationally, largely. It's a problem with the system and the way schools rely on test scores. So I appreciate the effort. I think it's a good idea, and I have a feeling it's going to carry to all of the campuses. We had, so we're good on moving this course forward?
Yes, please.
Yes. All right, so we'll move that course forward, and then we have the math capstone as well.
So we are proposing this course as a way for students to gain mastery. The kids who have not met benchmark, or who are on track to not meet benchmark, would be put into this course with the capstone projects built in. So two projects for first semester must have 75% mastery and a passing grade in the class to earn that check mark. If they don't complete the projects first semester, we have to second semester. We just want to make sure we're catching them every bit of the way. The curriculum that's used with this course already is designed to help them gain those skills to pass the Accuplacer, so that is another thing we want to put in place that they can take, especially if they didn't succeed necessarily in the SAT or SAT. Yeah, students, some students that, you know, are generally put into this class, if they're not, they know they're ready and destined for a career. They know that they want to just get out of high school and work. Sometimes often don't take the SAT as seriously as we would love them to. So this really just gives them a way to buy in this, you know, if you read in the course description, it says connect mathematics to real-world applications. When I created the projects, I just wanted it to be relevant. You know, the test isn't always relevant. Like, you find the arc length given a triangle with this length of a side, like, you know, when you're going shopping, or you're designing a house, or something like that, it's not really relevant. So when I put time into these projects, that's what I was thinking about. Any questions?
I appreciate putting the work in, because as we all know, it's the current juniors who cannot meet graduation requirements by credit acquisition. And so we will have whole sets of kids who may be able to demonstrate they have skills on a project that allows them to take time and think about it and go back and revise, but who probably aren't going to get the score on the SAT, and may not actually on the Accuplacer either, simply based on whether they can do it under a time constraint on the test. And so I appreciate the forethought in making sure that we're thinking about the kids who would like to walk across the stage a year and a half from now, and giving them a pathway to do it, other than saying, "Let's take the SAT for the first time." So, thank you. I as one person's saying, move it forward.
Yes, please.
All right, so that can be moved forward for action as well. Thank you. And so now we are on to the Charter School Annual Performance Report.
Good evening, and great co-Icanx Zone leader. Tonight, I'm going to present the Icanx Zone Annual Performance Report to Charter Schools. So we're going to jump right in. In the board packet, you have two documents, essentially. You've got the cover sheets or the summary pages for each of our charter schools, as well as the fairly extensive work that's used to evaluate the charter schools on an annual basis. Just to remind folks that may be watching or are in attendance up here, we have on each of the reports the status of the school, and that is every year since the beginning of the current contract, with the exception of Banning Willis, who is on the 30-year contract. But we do the comprehensive review every five years, so you're going to still see their indicators up here. Below that, we've got their indicators for each section, and we are reviewing academic performance of the school, the financial performance of the school, and then operations and governance performance as well. All of this is based on access standards, or the National Association for Charter School authorizers. And so we're not just making this step up. We are actually complying with standards in the field of authorization, and those standards are coded, if you will, in that area. In the board packet, you have access to review each of those standards, if you like, but they are pretty heavy. So I'm just going to briefly talk about each of the schools that we have being presented tonight. So Banning Willis Ranch Academy is still in good standing as far as their final outcome, and that's indicated here, in their third year of, since their last review. We are seeing that the score is a little bit lower than they have had in the past, and I want to highlight some of that area. Student growth is a little bit lower, and that is a result of state assessment, just like their SPF. And then achievement is a little bit lower this year as well. At the post-secondary level, Banning Willis, since their expansion, they are... At the post-secondary level, Banning Lewis, since their expansion, they are now calculated into PSAT and SAT scores this year. So they are achieving very well on that assessment there, and so we're seeing that result there. The other thing I want to highlight about Banning Lewis is this indicator here, and you're going to see this a number of times tonight, is that the additional obligations that our charter schools have is essentially submissions into our compliance portal. And so we collect data on all of our charter schools throughout the year, and most of this data is submitted either to the state or meets a specific criteria within their contract. And unfortunately, we had some delays or missed information being collected. In particular, with Banning Lewis, it was around their school audit. So if you remember, last year, we had an extensive delay in the audit being received at the district level. We are in audit season, Banning Lewis has, Ms. Jody has informed me that Banning Lewis has submitted their audit this year, and so we're happy to see that that's been corrected. So it's Banning Lewis, I want to move on to, this is Gold Academy. You were informed at the last board meeting, I believe, that Gold Academy attained a performance status on the A C school performance framework. Very excited about that, very happy. Honestly speaking, Gold Academy has done just about everything we've asked them to do as far as improving. Beyond that, a few years ago, Ms. Rivera was at a corrective action meeting with Gold Academy, and got to experience what that looks like and hear from them about what their plan was to improve. They have absolutely done that, and that is what you can see here. They are in good standing, their total score is one of our higher total scores of each of the performance reviews that we're going to review tonight. So not a whole lot more to share about that, other than they are doing a great job with kids, but they are also doing a great job with their operations, and their financial situation is in very good shape. Next is Grand Peak Academy, and so here we see that, you know, we are starting to see challenges in the area of academic growth and performance with Grand Peak as well. And so these are some areas that they are focused on, math is primarily their concern. We've engaged with their administration about their plans to improve in the area of math, and got some ideas around that. But then again, we have a low indicator in this other obligation. We did have leadership change at that school, and so that's not an excuse, but that is an explanation of where some things got left. And so there is an action plan to improve that with Grand Peak Academy. But they are transitioning well, we hope to see them in their new building here in the next two weeks, and can start moving right along with Grand Peak. All right, Liberty Tree Academy, in their first review, doing fairly well. The one thing that's interesting about Grand Peak is that you do see that they have a growth score. As a new school, those students that attend the school do come with a state identifying number, and so there is a growth score for the school, even though they're in their first year of operation. So growth was a little bit lower, but their achievement was exceptional this past year. They were one of our highest achieving schools in the district, certainly amongst our charter school portfolio. So they did a good job there. We are struggling a little bit with the newness of the school and the administration to comply with all the document submissions and things like that. Feel good about new leadership at that school, and that we will get to a point where they are hitting on all cylinders here soon. We are waiting on an audit from them right now, and so we are pressing hard to make sure that we give that information for our, so we can lead our audit and the district public. Pike Peak School of Expeditionary Learning. So we've seen a lot of great things at Pike Peak Expeditionary Learning, and just to note that they were just accredited through the expeditionary learning model with, as a school, a central school within their model. So we're very pleased to hear from a third party that they're doing great things. We know they're doing great things within our community and for their students. But it's always good to hear that echo throughout different areas as well. So achievement's a little bit lower than we would like to see. And when I say that about our schools, what we are measuring essentially here is looking at how they compare to other schools in our district, and then how they compare to other schools in the state as well. And so most, if not all, of our charter contracts or applications that are the foundation for the contracts say that they are going to outperform the school district or outperform the state. So they don't. We ask them why, and we ask them to make good on their requirements or their ambition to do that within their application. So that's what we're seeing there. It doesn't mean that they're not performing well, it's just meaning that they're not getting the goals that they've set for themselves. All right. And then, they are actually very compliant as far as our information requests and things like that, they're doing a great job on those areas. The one note on this school environment here is that there has been a lapse in bureaucracy, I should amount to say, in that they have not obtained a certificate occupancy in an official format. So we are still waiting on that, and that's been something that's been noted in the report for the last couple cycles here, so we're going to be getting that this year for sure. All right, P Tech, you can see that they started off much lower than expected, and they are gaining ground. So we're seeing some good things there at our technical early college, and that's being captured here in their good standing for the first time. So that's nice to see, they're not on corrective action with us, they are not having to submit a plan, things like that, so they're growing. Did miss a couple things, and mostly timeliness on those submissions, so we would expect that that would get rectified in this year's process. And finally, but certainly not least, or anything like that, Rocky Mountain Classical Academy. So as you remember, certainly this indicator here is indicative of the timeliness on the audit as well, last year was very late, which is a problem for us at the district level, and they were working on it, and they have done what they can to rectify that. They have gone through some leadership transition as well. They were on corrective action with us last year, we met with them, Mr. Hiltz and I attended meetings along with other administrators from the district to hear their plan, and we are in the process of holding accountable to that plan as well. They've been very open, they invited myself, and Mr. Hiltz attended their last board meeting, which was very nice, and we have a date from the district, and also hear about some of the things that they're working on. So while they are still in improvement status as far as their outcome on the A T R, they do have a corrective action plan that they're working towards, and we are still working with them to support them through that process. So I know that's a lot of information, and even more in your board packet, but I'd be happy to entertain any questions when I have them.
No questions, but the links don't work because we get it in PDF format, so we can't actually access to read up on the findings.
So in the, the actual board packet, or in the actual submission that I gave Donna, you should have the actual rubric, and that should come in a Excel sheet, so those links will work in that Excel sheet to pop back and forth between those.
Okay, I'm going to ask her about it because I don't have that here.
Sorry, I know that's, it's hard for the presentation.
When we get board docs working, then it won't be a problem.
Then it won't be a problem.
Transitioning in a couple of months.
And I'd be happy to send that to you directly.
Okay, thank you. I just, I think I've got it down a bit now anyway, that I can follow up with Donna when she gets back, so I'm going to run it through you, but thank you. Any further questions for Andy? Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're now on to the Culture and Services section.
All right, Dr. Lou Fletcher, Director of Culture and Services, also in.
Hi, I'm Danielle Grimaldo, I am the Base Forty-Nine Program Manager.
So she will always also be presenting with me on the parts with Base Forty-Nine. Make sure I have this thing right. Yeah, that's backwards, here we go. So I must be holding it upside down. Got it. In Culture and Services, we have a very broad portfolio of things that we do, so each time we have these updates, I select a few things, but as you know, we have restorative practices, we have our NSDCs doing the military engagement with families, those engagement rates are up and looking very good, we'll talk more about that in our next update. For the day, I'm going to concentrate on, we have Ignite Base Forty-Nine, and give an overview of what we're doing from the expulsion pilot out to when we got past the pilot, what that data looks like. One of the things here, we've been doing a lot of work with STEAM in the district based on the Ignite Grant. Schools have been taking advantage of that, we, they're doing it at a good rate, we'd like to see that rate be even better, because what we do is we offer to all the schools the things like Cool Science, or the Missoula Children's Theater, or any of the other events, or using the robots, to every school. Some schools engage with it, some schools don't engage with it, it depends what fits into their culture and their schedule. What we do is after those first schools engage and the schools don't, we give that opportunity for a second chance to the other schools. But our goal is for everybody to engage with it. Because one of the biggest increases of the grant, which will honor, is that we must spend all the money. So we're not going to have a situation where we say, hey, we saved you a whole bunch of money, Department of Defense, and here's back $2 million, that's not what their goal is. Their goal is for us to use the money to good purpose for the students in our schools. We have a bus, in other words, conversation earlier about a bus, we have a pretty funky bus up there, the Expeditions Bus, it has Z space computers on it. We've been doing some limited previews with groups, we had out here for the DAC yesterday, out to the side of the buildings, where they'll be able to see it. And there will be a ribbon cutting for the bus. One of the issues that I talked with Jack Patralla about is that we need to start setting down and planning for the out-year sustainment of the bus, you know, fuel and things like that, and being able to use our own mechanics and that kind of thing. But we will bring the bus to a board meeting very soon, not later than a meeting on November the 7th, I believe, when we have our military appreciation during Fantastic Forty-Nine. But it's a great experience, we want to get it out here, and want you guys to be able to walk through it. Some of you have seen things where there were demonstrations from the company, now we actually have this bus, and it's pretty awesome.
So we, in the Base Forty-Nine program, have worked to increase all of our licensing capacities so that we can service more of the children. Currently, we are up to a capacity of 60 within all of our schools. The main goal was to get to 60 to service our non-school days, fall break, spring break, teacher workdays, but it turns out that in several of our schools, we're actually meeting the capacity of 60 for just the before and after. For fall break this year, we've actually opened up a fourth school for a couple of the days, because we do have a really high enrollment of need during the fall break. Typically, we do three, one per zone, but like I said, with the increase, we opened it up to four. Base Forty-Nine has also been accepted into the CCAP program, which is the Colorado Child Care Assistance Program. So the families apply directly through the state of Colorado. It is income-based, and then the state will pay a portion of the childcare fees, and they'll pay it directly to us. We have also reestablished the dispersment formula that we've been using. We do a percent per student in attendance, per contract, and then because our program chart is weekly, we also break it down weekly to show every student what they paid weekly, and then what the school will be gaining from that. We have established a timeline of when we are going to distribute money back to the schools. We are going to do it twice a year, once in August, and then again in January, and we are going to give back at these times from past money that has already been occurred in the programs that we are giving back, real-time money, and not basing it off of any sort of estimated revenue that we may come into at that point.
Let me go back to that last slide, I just want to say a couple things on Base Forty-Nine. With revenue sharing, what I want to say is that we now want to give kudos to Sean Dorsey for incubating this and having the idea over in the Sand Creek Zone, allowing us to spread it out to the rest of the district. Give kudos to Ron Sprems for working with us on the new model to make sure we afford revenue, so we're paying out on actuals. And just as a point, last year, between first semester and second semester, we were able to give out about a quarter of a million dollars back to the schools. We have 11 schools that we were able to give back to then, and then we looked at Allies and Odyssey both share a location, so we're going to go ahead and break that out, so we'll be giving money back to 12 schools. And next year, we should be able to do more than a quarter of a million, because the first semester was some time in transition, being able to work on our fund balance. And this is, this operation works on revenue, so we're also able to give 3% of our total revenue back to the general fund. So as well as saying, it was a self-sustaining piece that makes employment for people within the district, but also serves the district, and also gives money back to our schools. So, you know, we were able to look at that first cycle of innovation with Sean, and now we have a second cycle of innovation with a rebranding and a re-strategy on how we do our finances. So it's a great success. All right, and I'll go through this very quickly. You've seen this data before about our pilot, before looking at the effectiveness of doing deferred expulsions versus regular expulsions, being able to work with our parents and families and that kind of thing. One of the things that we look at is we're applying restorative practices to it, you can see that the number of hearings went up each year because people trusted us more with those students, but the prediction is for those to go down over time as we institute restorative practices in the schools, so they'll handle more at the school level, unless will come out to us. And just looking at the data for last year, you'll see it already dropped from 30 to 20 hearings. We have a proportion of, you know, 60% deferred, 40% expelled on the initial hearing. Two of those 12 that were deferred became expelled, and actually, and one of these things goes back to the news of the day, addiction and vaping. The student who was expelled was our fastest one, who went back to school, she couldn't not vape, she vaped that day, and it was ended up the deferred expulsion. So I'd say she could be, the look at is what we do with our students when they're addicted to things, and helping us better service them that way. Go get the post-pilot data, the number of hearings is trending down as predicted, restoration is growing as a cultural value, which is great, which means that we should still have less of these expulsion hearings. 60% of, 60% resulting in deferments is a good rate, I know we've had years where it was 80%, that may have been an exceptional year, but I think the 60% is probably a better average rate there, which means we're still helping more than the majority of our students. We still have the rate of showing 60% became from deferred to expelled, and when students become expelled, don't get the impression that that's the end of the road, we don't do anything for them. We have students who were expelled, who we have worked with to get like GEDs and things like that, so becoming expelled is not the end of the road. We work with our students as long as they will work with us, and the families will work with us. So don't look at being expelled as a failure. And approximately 83% of students deferred, return to school, remain compliant, and go through their year, and they never have expulsion on their record. So I'd say this is a successful program from that perspective. Just going through these very quickly, you can see that that whole curve where the number of hearings annually are going down, and we'll see what that looks like after this year. These are expelled versus deferred. We've been doing more deferred than expelled, and then we look at the numbers of students who are not able to maintain on deferral. You see those small numbers in the green over there, and you see one year, we actually had 17 deferred students and zero students were, became expelled. So we want to look at doing more of that type of thing. This is a breakdown by ethnicity, you can take a look at that, it kind of falls along the demographic lines in the district. You can look at it as fairness, but we'd have to do actually statistics to be able to see if we were doing anything that was over-identifying any students right there. But our low numbers of expulsion hearings puts us into using a lot of small numbers, instead of a lot of large numbers, we'd have to look at it from that perspective, and we could do that if that was a desire. Looking at males versus females, there's more males going to expulsion than females. And with that, are there any questions?
I just wanted to say thank you for going through the process to get CCAP qualified for Base Forty-Nine. That, that's a huge deal for families in our community, to make sure that the opportunity to have childcare available at your child's school is available to every working parent, including those who need that income threshold that make it difficult to buy an outside care. And so I really, that's an extra effort to get certified for that program. A lot of for-profit childcare organizations don't do it, and so I'm really proud that our district has taken that on to make sure that we can serve all families in our community. So thank you.
Yeah, we look at that as, we look at it as a safety issue. We don't want kids out there to be latchkey kids, fourth and fifth graders walking home and waiting for mom or dad to get back from their job, so that meant a lot to us, it was a piggyback on, we did the same thing for the military programs, and we're going to do everything we can to make sure that people who have a desire for childcare can get it, because it is important, not only to them, it's important to us as a school, district, and community.
And I reiterate that, too. I have extensively used before and after school care for four out of five kids, and happening this in the district is definitely a big step, and thank you so much for bringing that to us. We use all resources in the district to make sure we deliver.
Thank you. So actually, Dr. Fletcher, you are a master as well for two job descriptions.
Yes, this is, the Dr. Lou Fletcher Show continues. Well, you understand, well, you listen to me, then you come back next time. Okay, new job descriptions. We try to make sure that we, again, do analysis of what our district needs, I think it's a purpose of Culture and Services to make sure that things that are needed in our culture, we kind of incubate them and reach out. This right here was a collaboration with Andy Franco to take a look at how we can better use our resources in central registration to support our charters, and create that bridge to make sure that we have better relations, we do things like our mandatory reports, state reporting, October counts, and that kind of thing. We don't have all of our schools on the same student information system, so what we have to do in lieu of that is So, what we have to do in lieu of that is reach out more, talk more, and let them understand the formats and such things need to be able to be put into our system so we can have accurate counts for October count, to make sure we're doing our pre-pupal funding correctly for our different collections, civil rights collections, December count, and other important aspects. If we have to report to CD, the accuracy of counting is supremely important because if we don't count accurately one year, and it'll be counted accurately the next year, it could be a delta in that that requires us to get audited. So, this is an effort for us to make sure that we understand that we're not charter schools and coordinated schools. We're just schools and we're all working together. So, disposition helps to empower that. We have a central register who is going to work with the charter schools, doing some training role, doing some things, getting formats out for those October counts. And for the civil rights collections, other collections we're responsible for, to make a better coherence and also giving the charters somebody to reach out to when they're starting out their school. So these folks will get out there. This will be in conjunction with our superintendent, our supervisor of central enrollment. Reach out to the charters when they first get approved, to talk to them, to let them understand the mechanisms they need in place to be up and running as a school within District Forty-Nine.
For those that are not aware of how funding works for these types of positions, the cost of this position will be billed based on that percentage to charter schools as a part of their contracting fee. And so, charters actually pay for this support to the district. This is not coming out of coordinated school students funds to pay for that position. So, when you see us add a position and it says charter next to it, we're tracking those funds and billing the charter schools for them. So I think that's important for our community to know that the charter schools carry their burden. They're not asking us to carry it for them. So that's my only comment. Any other comments on this piece? Okay, are we good with moving this position forward?
Yes.
That position forward for action at the next meeting. And now we are on to the Base Forty-Nine Administrative Assistant position.
Yes, this is another one. I think we'll be doing a greater job analysis across all positions in this space. Before, it's taking a look at the Administrative Assistant. This was originally touted as an Office Assistant. And then when we looked at the duties, doing a job analysis of the Office Assistant, those duties more were parallel to what an Administrative Assistant does, having budget responsibility and such. And also with this position, as I talked about earlier, about being an organization that generates revenue and gives money back to the general fund. This has no impact on the general fund in terms of taking money from it. This has to go from the funds that are made by Base Forty-Nine itself. So it's one of those things, we're recognizing what a person is actually doing and then moving compensation to match what they're actually doing. Like I said, we are expanding. We opened up Inspiration View this year. And as we get more elementary schools, that means we have to expand more Base Forty-Nine. And our core office staff right now is Danielle, Hillary, and Tammy, who is who this person would be to make sure that we can continue to support all of our students. I had the pleasure of watching Pedro talk about the future of our community and about how many elementary schools we'll need in the future. If we have before and after care for every school, then we need a future. Base Forty-Nine will be armies of people. In fact, what we're doing right now, Danielle told me today, we need four more people. So we're looking to hire four more people to make sure we can keep up with the pace of growth within Base Forty-Nine. The reason why we went to sixty because one of the things close to my heart is that we can't have waiting lists. If parents are in need and they need their kids to have before and after care, it's not appropriate to me to say, you have to be on a waiting list. That's why we expanded to sixty this year from forty-five and we'll do more locally if need be.
Thank you. And then I believe you are the next PM as well, which are revised job descriptions, which appear to me just essentially the title changes to make sure we were reflecting the name and the background.
Yes, this one is very easy. When it was Kids Corner, when it was, at its inception, it was Kids Corner. We did some looking around for branding. And we also noticed that there was another Kids Corner within Colorado Springs. So, one of the things we want to do is, one of the worst things for a brand identity is brand confusion. So we looked for a name that was distinctive to District Forty-Nine, so we made it Base Forty-Nine. So to do that and for the administrative pieces, we need to make all of the job descriptions reflect Base Forty-Nine versus Kids Corner.
Okay, so moving forward folks.
Yep.
All right, so we're moving that forward as well at the next meeting. Thank you very much, Dr. Fletcher.
This includes the Culture and Services Show.
All right, so we are now on to the Primary Literacy Moments Report.
I'm looking forward to updating you. There's actually a lot that's happened in the last three months since I was here in June. So, our summer read camp theme this last summer was Be Your Own Superhero. And we were fortunate enough to have some guest readers, including Batman and our local deputies from the Willapaka County Sheriff's Office, the Badges in Books Program. They encouraged our students to take risks and increase their own learning. We had a total of one hundred eighty-three students registered across our zones and one hundred fifty-three students attended consistently. Once again, the Falcon Zones' average rate of attendance surpassed the other zones' attendance by eighty-six percent. The average district-wide attendance on a daily basis was eighty-two percent. So in previous years, the demographics of our read camp participants have been more boys than girls, but this year we reversed that trend just a smidge and we actually had more girls in attendance. And you know that students that have been invited to participate in read camp have been identified as having a significant reading deficiency, or SRD, as we call it. And that's in accordance with the Acadian's benchmarking, which used to be double next. So, we identified those needs last year, at beginning of the year, in middle of the year, and then we confirmed that identification at end of the year. And those students, sixty-three percent of our students were general education students in read camp. Thirty percent were on an IEP with reading goals and eight percent were English language learners. Following the completion of read camp, we always survey parents. And this year, we received thirty-five responses. The majority of the survey responses came from Sand Creek. We asked parents a host of questions, including how many students they had attend camp, what they perceived as the quality of communication from teachers and staff, whether their student took advantage of the bus service or the free breakfast and lunch program. We had approximately twenty percent of our participants participate in the free breakfast program and thirty-three percent of our participants participate with the free lunches. And that's one of our deputies reading to our students. The most meaningful impact for us was that one hundred percent of parents said that they would rate the quality of the program at overall excellent, at eighty-six percent. And I included some comments that we received in the surveys. These were parent-generated comments that are always very meaningful to us. So the most meaningful feedback for us was that one hundred percent, one hundred percent of our parents said that they would send their seeds back to read camp. And we know that the affective or emotional domain is just as critical for the future success of these students as their academic success. They told us that their children were more confident, more independent, and that they thoroughly loved being at read camp, which is really what we strive to achieve. So, one of the things as a district we focus on are the development and access to libraries. And with some of our state library grant funds, we added Myon News to our district-coordinated schools' Myon subscriptions last spring. And we saw a significant increase in Myon usage this summer, both in the number of minutes read at each grade level and in the number of books read. I don't know if you remember, but as a kid, we had like scholastic news that was kind of a... So Myon is an updated, literally to the minute. Myon News is an updated to-the-minute news program for kids and it's all kid-friendly and kid-appropriate. The next few slides highlight our Acadian's results at beginning of the year as well as the results for our read camp students. So, at beginning of the year this year, we saw a slight dip and we are having conversations about this dip. Our overall percentage of students at or above benchmark fell three percent from this time last year. So, as we start primary literacy meetings in buildings, we're asking schools to identify what kind of growth or regression, again, that they have seen within cohorts of students. And we're talking about refining practices, not just for our students that read below or well below grade level, but also those students that are reading at or above. Schools are reflecting and refining practices in order to increase these numbers because what this tells us is we lost some of our fragile kids, frankly. And we know that that regression happens over the summer, so we typically see a dip this time of year. For our fragile readers that attend read camp, the goal is always to reduce that regression as much as possible. And the slope of these lines, and I'm not going to dig deep into these, but the slope of these lines indicates the degree of recession. So, all of the students in district are the red lines and the summer nineteen read camp students are the dark green line. Our beginning-of-the-year first-grade students, which were the kindergarten students in the spring, had less regression than our typical district-wide learners. And that tells us that that instruction was impactful. We want our most fragile readers, of course, to hold on to as many of the skills as they have gained during the school year over the course of the summer. And the big celebration is that when we look at our first-grade students, well, the students that left first grade that are now second grade, those students only regress from end of the year to beginning of year by one-tenth of a point. So that is a huge celebration, that that was a stable level of skill mastery, especially as those kids are actually reading text. So, our newest third-grade students have a steeper line than all second graders. And we are analyzing these skill deficits very closely, both for fall camps and spring camps. So, I'll be working with the staff to identify what we can do to best meet the needs of these new third graders. And then, as always, we see the steepest lines of regression with third grade. This visual, I think, for third grade is a powerful reminder of how critical it is to fill gaps as early as possible because the regression gets steeper and deeper over time. And despite that regression, our read camp students experienced an average of seven points less regression than our students that didn't attend read camp. So, that's encouraging. I've also included three slides for you, just for your review. And I'm not going to go through these and I'm happy to entertain questions. But these are, as we always refer to, the basic early literacy skills that are the strongest predictors of success for our kindergarten and first-grade students. And with each of these skills, our read camp students have experienced less regression than our students that have not attended read camp. And that will always be our goal, is to minimize that regression. So, we are now starting our primary literacy meetings. And as we go into schools, we're going to be talking about how these skills are taught deliberately, intentionally, with fidelity, and how schools and teachers are monitoring the mastery of these skills. So this is our nonsense word, correct letter sounds. And then this is our nonsense word, whole word read. So, moving into our school year this fall, I know I mentioned in the past that Leslie Lott, who was the keynote speaker for our literacy summit, was coming back for some professional learning. So she was here for a total of six days in August and September. There were approximately forty teachers in each cohort, so about a hundred and twenty teachers total. I worked with Sean Dorsey in the Sand Creek Zone and Sand Creek High School was kind enough to open their library to us. And so it was the perfect learning environment for adults. The feedback from the one hundred and twenty teachers in attendance was overwhelmingly positive. And I wanted to just include a few screenshots, snapshots of some of the things the teachers wrote because this was not only encouraging, but I would say in terms of professional learning, it was fairly unusual to see this kind of enthusiasm. So, Leslie returns in January for three final days that will attend to the scoring of writing. And then finally, as we move forward towards deeper proficiency, we are going to continue to place an emphasis on the basic early literacy skills that we always do to ensure mastery. At the beginning of the year, we trained all new kindergarten through fifth-grade licensed staff, including special ed and other specialists on Acadian's benchmarking and progress monitoring so they could assess their students over the course of the year. Our early literacy grant at Evans Elementary is progressing well. They are shoulder-deep in implementation, if you will. They have adopted a new reading curriculum with Core Knowledge Language Arts. They have had time with their ELG consultant and they have completed the first day of four days of letters training. Our ELG folks will attend the CDE Read Conference in Grand Junction the first week in October. And today was the launch for our first primary literacy meetings. And those will conclude just prior to Thanksgiving break. Questions, folks?
I think it's moving along great.
Thank you.
I think it's going really well.
It's been very busy.
Very happy to see, you know, the teachers enthusiastic about that professional education because that's something that they've been asking for. So, glad we reached out and maybe that happened.
You are correct. At this time last year, the overwhelming message that we heard was, we need support with writing instruction. And so, this is, and there's also plans for Leslie to come back and be the keynote again for the literacy summit. So we're going to continue this relationship with her.
To battle, say two things. Zone-wide, each of our six schools were at performance level, the highest rating on the school performance framework. And each of our schools, minus Bennett Ranch because they weren't in existence the year before, improved upon their points on SPF. So, I was pleased to see that. We'll start off with Bennett Ranch. Bennett, brand-new school, new staff, brand-new principal, new kids, no baseline, no benchmark. And using curriculum, some of the curriculum resources teachers were using, none of them had ever seen before. So they endured training all year long on multiple aspects, multiple resources that they were using. And so, it was kind of unknown where they were going to land. And they graded performance, so now we have our baseline, so pleased with that. A lot of first-year schools don't rate performance. And Bennett Ranch also outperformed the district in fourth and fifth grade math and fifth ELA, so I'm seeing that. So, that was good news. Falcon Elementary School Technology, if you recall last year, if you look at that bottom chart, that is the growth. And if you look at two thousand and eighteen growth score, remember, we're looking for at least being in the fiftieth percentile. And I encourage much higher, when we're in the sixties, that's strong. And two thousand and eighteen growth, we see, especially in math, outstanding growth for fourth and fifth grade. And fourth ELA was at sixty-four point five percent. So, it's hard to sustain growth sometimes. And I was pleased with, we really sustained high math growth. And faltered a little bit in fourth grade ELA, but that was really, that's strong growth, strong math growth. Another thing that Falcon Elementary did was really show strong performance in math. And math has been a weakness and performance has been a weakness for Falcon Elementary. So, I was really pleased to see that. They also, no, mine already said it. So, math and growth were high points for Falcon Al. Merton Ranch, last year, they weren't at performance. They slipped down to improvement and that was a real gut punch for the school. And the staff rolled up their sleeves and focused and got to work and brought the school back up to a performance rating. And not only that, if you look down at the growth chart down below, we don't see growth percentiles in the sixties yet, but they really, really did some good movement in the growth area. And outperformed the district and the state in third and fourth ELA and in all its math assessments. So, Merton Ranch is back and it was really cool to be there when the SPF was unveiled to the staff and they were pretty excited for that. Woodman Hills continues to improve on their SPF. Outperformed the district and the state on all ELA and math measures, so that's exciting. And if you look at the growth chart, you can see between two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen math significant growth in math. So, moving on to Falcon Middle, last year Falcon Middle was performance, but they had slipped a bit and were in danger of being an improvement. And that was another staff that was really sobered by their results last year and really got to work. And results were impressive, outperforming the district and the state on all ELA measures and outperforming the district in seventh and eighth grade math. If you look at the growth chart on the ELA side, between eighteen and nineteen, remarkable improvement in growth scores. And significant math growth if you look at the other charts. So, really, I was really pleased to see that and, you know... So really, I was really pleased to see that, and, you know, our staffs have been working really hard. And as we go to Falcon High School, we shift gears and look at the PSAT and the SAT. The arrows on the performance side of the chart, the score side, are, just indicate movement from this year compared to last year. So if you look at ninth grade, we see upward movement in scores across the board from the previous year. Tenth grade, it's a downward arrow. It's not a huge difference in downward movement, but wanted to indicate that. And then we see a little mixture in the eleventh grade SAT. So highlights, just that upward mobility, consistent ninth grade increases in ELA and math. Outperformed the district in all composite scores. And then I wanted to put the percentile, so when you're looking at percentiles, 50th percentile means you're right in the middle of schools in Colorado. And so we see a little mixture. We want to be at least a good deal, then we know that math is still an area of need. But we're seeing, we're seeing some, we're seeing some positives in Falcon High School. So across the zone, I wanted to highlight strategies we're using. Zone-wide, throughout all schools, of course, our empowered SC coaching, our professional learning, the modern teacher platform. And then we started conducting instructional rounds with principals and instructional coaches, as well as Melissa Rigs from EdTech Department, to really go into classrooms in a nonjudgmental way and just observe and collect data on what are the teachers doing, what are students doing, and what are the tasks that the kids have been asked to do. And come back and compare notes and eventually form what are our next steps from what we're seeing in the classroom, what do we need to do as leaders to impact instruction. And then we've got some more isolated strategies. Curriculum alignment is not just horizontal but vertical at Meridian Ranch. Writing focus in all of our elementary schools, unless the loudest training has been part of that, but we have other areas of focus. Big math focus at Falcon Middle and at Falcon High School increased on current enrollment and CTE courses and really just preparing our kids for what's next.
I just noticed that you had all the graphs with the school colors. Nice job.
Thanks. Thanks for noticing.
Anything else, folks? Thank you. It's great to see those principals. That makes me excited because then the other scores, the achievement will eventually complement that group.
Thanks for...
All right, so our next item is the accreditation of schools report.
Good evening. I am happy to be here tonight to share our district and school performance frameworks with you as well as recommendations for the accreditation of our schools. I believe all of you have been through this routine before. And so I have provided quite a bit of information in your packet, but I'm not going to spend as much time this evening as I might have with new board members. And our zone leaders and Mr. Hiltz have already been giving you a preview of these results. And so we'll spend time discussing, and I can address questions you have at the end if I don't go quite as deep as I might have in previous years. As you know, the board is obligated to accredit each of our schools, including our charter schools, by October fifteenth annually. And I want to highlight and celebrate that although you heard about some challenges at some schools this evening, overall, our district is performing better than we have in the past four years in the areas of achievement, growth, and post-secondary workforce readiness. Many of our schools who were rated below a performance rating have now attained a performance rating. And almost all schools are improving over the past four years. So this is really a celebration. And you've already heard this news, but I am going to reiterate. Kudos to both Patriot High School and Goal Academy for both achieving performance ratings this year. And the reason this is so impactful for our entire district is that this now gives us a real viable chance at raising our district overall accreditation rating. I've already submitted that draft request to CDE, and we should be receiving feedback on that prior to your vote. I included all of the school performance framework reports in your board packet. And then there is some additional detail here that shows our trends over time in each of the indicators. And this is district-level data, so you'll see our achievement over time, our growth over time. You'll notice the high school level science is a bit lower than the other content areas. And that's something we're continuing to work on, getting more investment from our eleventh graders in that science assessment. And then our post-secondary workforce results. This is broken up by school because our alternative education population is so significant. It's important to know how each school is performing comparatively. I also, before I move on to our recommendations, want to highlight Allies. If you will remember, this time last year, we were exploring options. Should Allies continue to receive a rating of either priority improvement or turnaround? Up to even discussing the possibility of closure potentially. And I am so proud to let you know that Allies not only improved, but was one point shy of a performance rating. So please recognize Allies staff when you see them for their hard work and commitment to kids. Spring Studio had unusually low participation this past testing season. And although they improved their achievement and their growth overall, the accountability regulation requires that if we don't have ninety-five percent participation in each test, that the accreditation rating is lowered. And in response to this, CDE has actually suggested that we submit a request to reconsider on their behalf. This would allow us to utilize their three-year report in place of their one-year report for this particular accountability season. And then I recommend all other schools be accredited as indicated in their school performance framework.
I agree with all three recommendations, and kudos to both Patriot, Goal, and Allies. I should say all three.
I'm proud of our whole district. I think everyone's worked really hard on this. And we're showing the, the reason why it's worth to invest in all kids. You know, the three schools that we've had to work really hard on may be able to say, hey, this population is worth investing in. Patriot High School, Goal Academy, which we have been beat up for over and over and over again as a district, and Allies, all are reaching kids who wouldn't have been reached otherwise. And we're showing it can be done and done well if you're willing to invest time. And because that's what it's taking, is time, time and the right support. So I'm thrilled. It's a really, really great start, so I'm going to be able to leave on, so thank you. I love this.
Thank you.
No. I want to get my child home to bed at some point, too. All right, so we are on to policy and procedure review. Did anybody have any questions on the policies that were the minor investments? I have them.
Nope.
All right, so we get to move those forward.
Yes. Yes.
All right, thank you. So we'll move those forward as well. All right, we're on to enrollment update with Mr. Springs.
Good evening, Board, Ron Springs, Director of Finance, enrollment update. I've been doing a great job this year updating Donna on Monday with the latest and greatest slides. I did not do it this week, so I dropped the ball.
That is not here, so.
So this is actually, the counts as of September sixteenth, you can see, were still flattening out. And that's what continued, if I would have showed the slides as of the twenty-third, we're still showing actually even further flattening out. Especially at the middle and elementary schools, we're seeing a little bit of a drain at the high schools. A little pickup at P-Bex, I don't know if there's switching around going on there, but... Anyway, so we're just kind of keeping our fingers crossed as we head into next week, which is October count. And I will be keeping an eye on that very closely. And hopefully, again, you know, as our goal has been, this whole enrollment season is to get rid of that cliff at the end there and get a little, a better accuracy earlier on in the year. Again, I don't know if I mentioned this last time, the, you know, I talked about that moving class in the past. And we're, that moving class is showing about two hundred and forty, two hundred and fifty kids. So I'm fairly, have good feelings and I'm holding some high hopes that this October count is showing pretty close to what we're tracking right now. Again, I think that number, we're showing, this one shows two hundred and eighty above budget target. The twenty-third is showing two hundred and seventy-four. So. New and revised student participation fees. Again, I'm Ron Springs, Director of Finance. This comes this time of year where, you know, I can't remember, I think it was back in, maybe April timeframe, May timeframe, where we vote on student fees for the upcoming school year, where there's always some that get missed. And so Chuck Gilbert, one of the budget analysts, collects that data as we move into the school year. And we come by usually in this timeframe to just put an update of those funds. So you can see a lot of them were in Inspiration View, and of course, that's a brand-new school, so they're implementing all their new fees there. I think there was a big one in there, might have been a dance, yeah, a dance class at this high school. But Chuck does a good job. He puts together all the different pages on this, so you can see any details you want if you're curious on how expenses are being broke down. Any questions on this one?
We still allow the different sports events, whatever, to do fundraising, correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
All right, so move these forward, gentlemen.
Yes, please.
All right, so move those forward for action in our next meeting, please. All right, so now we are on to our monthly financial update.
Good evening, Julie, Julie, my counting group, Angie. I'm not going to let there, Sarah, help me help her. I'm just kidding. I might be able to... I'm going to start with, just a quick update on this page here, or these couple pages. That is a quick summary of all funds, their asset liabilities, fund balance. I do want to point out that it's an estimated fund balance because we're still working on time. Last year's numbers, don't have the final audit numbers in there yet. So it is estimated, but hopefully by the next board meeting that I come see you, we'll have some definite, solid numbers in there that I won't have to say estimated. So just an update as well, the auditors were here two days this week to get some information. But we decided together that coming back in November may be a better workload, I guess you could say it, because we were missing a couple things, still trying to get stuff to, from the charters. And so just giving us a little bit more time, and that way they can come in and just bring up that information on the few things that they were missing. And I will admit, one of the things that we're behind timing-wise on is fixed assets. But I just want to tell you, with all the MLO monies over the last few years, last year, in order to become a fixed asset, it's something that is a single unit that is over five thousand dollars. Last year, I added sixty-seven assets. Obviously, most of them were over five thousand dollars, eleven were the additions, secure front entries. I'm adding over a hundred and sixty this year. So it's taken a little bit more time, but definitely it's in very good shape. I've done a lot of dissecting of really what does belong in there, what, you know, working with transportation, working with facilities, making sure it's an accurate inventory of vehicles that we have, modulators that we have. So doing some really good work, getting that cleaned up. So for this one, I just wanted to point that out, that it is estimated, but they are fairly good. Not a whole lot are to ending journal entries that we need to do to make those changes. Also, something I did want to mention or talk about today is the, I'm going to jump real far back through here, and I think it's on page forty-one of the financial package. Is these spreadsheets here that I do, which is by zone by internal vendor group. And I really like to rely on these because it's a good snapshot of expenses and breakdowns in different categories and different funds of what total funding is going into these schools on a yearly basis. And the ones I wanted to point out at these four to five pages is down at the bottom, there's a mid-living override, probably, one, two, three, four, lines down in that bottom section. And so each one of those, and obviously you'll see some numbers in there, but I just really think that line is really important. It's showing our community, our schools, where those mid-living monies are going and what schools, what projects. The one that I wanted to kind of give you a little bit more information on is their internal vendor group. Again, I was going to talk about the fixed assets that we're entering, that are being added this year, the bus leases that Jack talked about, the new outright purchases. So all of those have already happened, so you're going to see those expenses. And as you're looking at these reports, you're going to see expenses a little higher at the beginning of the year, but that makes complete sense. There's a lot of yearly contracts that we pay out in the first, second months for the entire year. And so while that will level off, our revenues will increase as we're moving through the months of the year. Also, within the certain internal vendor group, there is, shows a lot of money already in the IT line of MLO revenue, about seventy-two thousand already. A lot of that is our vast improvements to the wireless access plan and reconfiguring our networks for the district. So really good projects that are going on, that are helping not only the students, but staff as well to be able to get their work done effectively and efficiently. The other piece that I wanted to point out on these pages, this grouping of pages, is that at the very top, I have membership count by CDE FY twenty. That's actually FY, the CDE membership count numbers are actually Power School data that I grabbed from Ron's reports for enrollment. So those are, you know, not exactly, but those are the numbers that he was reporting on last Monday. And then the free and reduced numbers are still the FY nineteen numbers, because obviously those haven't come out yet, but I will update those as soon as we have that, probably after the October count is finalized and all that. So just, you know, those numbers are a little bit not hard to ask, correct? But they're very close.
Anybody have any questions, Ryan?
Not necessarily a question, but just maybe a statement for the public to understand.
Sure.
And the budget stabilization factor, otherwise known as the negative factor. A lot of people in our district don't seem to understand that the state, even though our constitution, state constitution says that education K through twelve should be fully funded, the state actually came up with the negative factor. And in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, it was close to seventeen point five million dollars that we did not get from the state that we should have. So what we do here, what you do, Ron and Brett and everyone else, is, you know, you guys basically start off with a seventeen point five million dollar shortfall because the state isn't giving you what they should be giving you, what the people of Colorado has said give to the school district. And you guys do very wonderful things with that limitation. So I'm very impressed, again, that this report is, you know, walked into what it is, but that you guys do so well managing and being so transparent with the resources that the tax areas provide us. And every time I can, I make sure that, you know, when someone's talking to me about, you know, you guys get enough taxes and stuff like that, I point that out. They really don't understand it. They're like amazed that we're still, we get shorted that much. I think it's above a hundred and twenty million since they started. And I think it's above $120 million since they started doing this.
Yes.
And that's a high school right there. So when we're talking about, you know, how we're going to do this in the future, like at the town halls, this is an important aspect. We wouldn't really be saying, oh, what do we do with the money? We'd be building another high school if they hadn't given us this money, you know, technically.
Potentially.
Potential.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And for the questions? All right, thank you very much, Julie. Okay, we are on to the review of the Colorado Association of School Board's proposed resolutions for delegate assembly. So I have a suggestion, somewhere everyone else is on it. We just got Amy's information, so I don't think the full boards had an opportunity to review her commentary, and I know I didn't fill anything out because I wanted, I wanted to review what Amy's knowledge was, as well as chief officer's knowledge on these before I read it. So I can have Donna make sure that every, all of the board members get a copy of Amy's and have her send it to chief officers as well, but chiefs, we also could use your insight on these as well. And so what do we want to look at as timeline on that, so that we can meet Donna's timeline of, I think she needed information back by October 4th for the next one. The goal of this being that the board can have a consensus recommendation to send to their delegate, which will be after the October meeting, so.
It's the 18th and 19th of October is the Caspian Delegate Assembly. We'll be voting on the 19th. And so basically, I think by the 4th, by our next working, by our next regular meeting, we have to say, yeah, Amy's next word, we have to get into Caspian.
No, 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 we don't have to get anything into Caspian. So the whole purpose of this is to ensure that you as the delegate know what the consensus district recommendation is for you to then support. And so I think like the timeline I have on here is a little bit far as, because as a board member, ultimately it's the board members. As a board, the board members are the ones who say, okay, overall this is where we are, when in the past we've had board members just do a checklist and then pass it on. I'm not comfortable filling out the checklist until I've heard from everybody else.
But I actually regret that, that's what I was waiting for.
So we've got Amy's. Chief officers, what would be reasonable for you to be able to provide us some feedback on these, so that we can kind of review your perspective and her perspective, so that we can then provide John the information he needs? Because I think us, you know, talking through all of these resolutions during a meeting is probably a little ridiculous.
I have a question, wasn't she just, Josh and I have not seen that. What you're, you're fleshing through, so I have a question.
Well, right, well, literally this was handed to me as I walked into the meeting, and this is why I said, Donna, they got it today.
Just want to make sure.
Right, that's why I'm saying Donna's going to have to send Amy's to all of us. But we don't have anything from the chief officers.
So we have a chief officer meeting already scheduled next Tuesday. And so I think we were just, as we were just whispering to each other, that would be the best time for us to take Amy's comments and match that up and put it all together.
Sure. So all the comments back to.
For all group.
Right, and then we can provide John what each of us individually thinks by the October. Okay. So you guys can get it to Donna probably that day, and then she can forward it to all of us, and then we can work on, we need to try and get our information back to Donna. Okay? All right, so then I think we're done with that agenda, though.
Okay.
Basically delegated out, saying, hey, we need more information on some of these things. The Safe to Tell one is on there, by the way, that I pointed out earlier. Jamie asked Johnny, and it was really nice to, so. Like, don't mess with Safe to Tell, is what her advice is. So our next item is the proposed job description for the director of data. Ron, it's.
Good evening, Peteral's Chief Education Officer on behalf of the chief officer team, and this is a position that we have discussed in some different settings. It is responsive to some realities that we are experiencing as the district continues to grow, as we've been reporting in our community hall, town hall meetings. We are the fastest growing district in the state, fastest growing large district in the state over the last five years. And as one result of all of that growth, we increase exponentially the amount of data that we have to gather, configure, or convert into the proper formats, analyze, report, and then calibrate or correct, depending on the reporting process. It's also true that as a portfolio district, we are increasingly gathering data from disparate sources, some of those being charter schools, others being operated schools that have different kinds of configurations. So the data load has gotten bigger, and we, as we've got more people working on our data, we have increasingly felt the need for consolidation and inconsistent protocols about how we gather, configure, analyze, report, and calibrate our data. And so this position is intended to provide leadership in the area of data services as a function of a strong organization. We want to be a role model organization. Organizations of our size that have the data function that we have typically would have multiple dedicated teams of data analysts and data reporters, and we have done it, really just kind of grown organically, and we do it ad hoc. As a result, we have multiple data systems led by different individuals with differing protocols and expertise and priorities, and so we're looking to consolidate that data function. An important reason that we want to consolidate data is because we want to perform as a role model organization. And so in order to reach peak performance and be in the top decile, and we've talked about it, and be a role model, we need to understand more deeply, how are we doing? Where do we have gaps? Where do we have lags? And excellent data analysis goes hand in hand with excellent organizational performance. So that is why this position of a Director of Data and Performance was originally conceived and why we're presenting it to you. And so you can see that this individual reports to me, that's really, at this point, it is a transitional job description, and that's the way we described it in the cover sheet, because we anticipate this position will sort of consolidate and solidify through the remainder of this school year with some additional clarification and a revised job description for you in June or July, most likely in June at your regular meeting. We anticipate starting this position out, reporting to me, and we'll evaluate that in terms of span and control balance and appropriate configuration. But this really is a position that serves our entire district. We've called this the Wide Accountability Group, comparable to Culture and Services, Communications, Safety and Security, Human Resources. We all depend heavily on data and the performance insights we get from data. So this position would essentially be a Director without a department, so would not have direct reports to begin. We would have a group of individuals who are affiliated, and those affiliates are shown here with some of their associated functions. Not all of these affiliates should or would ever end up reporting to this Director, and some of them, there are even some other data users and data leaders that are not represented here, partly because we wanted to show you the scope of what this looks like, of what this position would entail. So when we talk about data and performance, we're talking about all of these different functions across business office systems, operations office, and education office. We also would expect that the individual serving in this Director level position would help us identify, based on data and performance analysis, would help us identify opportunities for leadership pipeline development. And so there's a data mining approach to this, but there's also a strong customer relations component to this. So we're really looking for somebody who's got high touch and high tech skills. This is a tough hire, but we believe in our, in our community, there are people who would meet this profile. So this is an individual, to use a familiar part of our recent history, who would revive the Peak Partners Leadership Academy under probably a different branding, but that concept of identifying members of our community who aspire to serve, or who are already serving in roles on school accountability committees, district accountability committee, advisory committees, whether for special education or the SCAT team, wherever we find leadership, we want to cultivate that leadership with the ultimate goal of making sure we have excellent community leadership at all levels, up to and including the Board of Education. And since Dr. Frye is an alumni of PPLA, we know that it has at least one empirical success story. Thank you for representing the squad. We also acknowledge that performance excellence is deeply and tightly closely related to customer service, including the service that we provide our community patrons, our families and students and community, but also the service that we provide internally. Our various departments serve our schools and each other more than just data. We solve problems, we repair, we improve. And so we would want this individual as part of their analysis of our performance data to help us do a better job of understanding and improving our customer service function. So it's really four functions, data, performance, leadership pipeline, and succession planning, along with customer service. But really those second two, or those last two, excuse me, are kind of subsumed in performance. So it's data and performance with leadership and customer service improvement. So that's the overview of the position. I will stop there and see if there are questions I might be able to answer.
Is that considered an administrative position?
It is. And the FTE, or the full-time equivalent resource that we would apply to this position is essentially the dividend that we gain by combining the Director of Concurrent Enrollment with the Director of Career Technical Education. That used to be two positions, it is now consolidated into a single position as the Director of Applied and Advanced Learning. And so we've held on to that administrative FTE, that position, and we haven't spent it, but we are now coming to you. So we've had it, historically we've had that level of spending. So the net between last May and whenever we would hire this person, the net would be neutral, but there's been incremental savings over about a half of a year of the Director level resource.
So what you're saying is we still are within the range that we set for ourselves as a district between administrators and number of students, administrators and how much, you know, they cost?
I will defer to Mr. Anderson when he does that calibrated report, because it's a lot more technical than that, but I will say emphatically that this position doesn't, this position is a neutral. There are lots of other calculations, and I actually believe we're in a better place than we were a year ago, but that's an uninformed, an optimistic statement. Mr. Anderson will validate or correct me.
Thanks, guys. So we'll move that forward for actual next meeting, thank you. All right, next we have another big job description, Facilities Project Manager.
This is a new job position that we are proposing within the district. All of you are familiar with Ron Lee, who is our Director of MLO, MLO 3B Project. And when that position was created a few years ago, it was created with the intent that it would sunset after about three years. And that position is getting ready to sunset here at about the end of the three-year period. However, the functions and the needs that we have with that position are not going away just for the MLO piece, because we still have MLO projects we will continue to monitor, not nearly at the scale that we have had for the last few years, but we definitely have a few projects that continue. Beyond that, as the district continues to grow, and we've been talking about that for the last, the last number of years, and certainly had a lot of focus on it the last few weeks, as the district continues to grow, the requirements for construction are going to continue over time. And as the district continues to grow, and we have more facilities, as we add the eyes, and we've added the Bennett Ranch, and we added the Allies Building, and we added the addition at P-Bac, with every single one of these additions, there comes more property and more places where we have to manage and maintain and do capital projects over time, both on older buildings as well as on newer buildings as well. So we see nothing but a continued growth in the area and the requirement for the district to have somebody who can manage and watch all of these projects, capital improvement projects when they're in an execution phase, construction projects, whether that be actually managing it themselves, or being the supervisor for an owner representative who is actually doing the managing of project force, and/or MLO projects, not just detailing what we're finishing up now, but also as we look in the years ahead, and we get the neutrons of MLO money by six, seven years from now, we'll have another span, another burst of MLO construction projects. So this is a position that would be created in order to manage those projects. We see this as the person that would actually be managing the execution of the projects and be a contributor to the planning process. So this person would be working hand in hand, in particular with Melissa Andrews. Melissa's got the lead on planning and on working with, working with the county and working with different regional offices, strategic planning, working with architects, designing, sculpting projects. This person would be assisting her in that role. But when actually you've got a shovel that's breaking ground, or someone's actually coordinating or monitoring a project, this is the kind of person that would be monitoring and watching and controlling those projects and making sure it'll be on time, on target, under budget, and planning how the schedules are matched. So we have a fairly lengthy job description that's here, that is based off of a number of different past positions we've had within the district and where we see other functions. We don't see this person having to do all of this at the same time, but all of these are certainly things that would be coming and going in peaks and ebbs over the span of the time that they were working in the district. This is a Prof 3, a Prof Tech position, Range 3. It is not an administrative position. It's actually, what Ron is in right now is an admin position, that was created as an administrative position. And as we look to the future, and we look to continue to set the structure right within operations, I would anticipate that that administrative position will come back to bear later, because we have to look at how we have facilities structured for the long term. We have not settled that out quite yet. So I anticipate that that administrative position will come to be used later, but this is a Prof Tech Range 3 position.
All right, so here now, we could move it up forward.
Yes.
So move that forward for actual next meeting, thank you. We're now on to Business Office Staffing Update.
Brett Ridgeway, Chief Business Office. No spreadsheet even on this one. And there's no job description, et cetera. This is, this is a, something that I've been prepping you guys probably for a while, that we have for many years had the benefit of this dynamic duo handling our payroll functions, two people handling our payroll function here at the district. And knowing that they are just hyper efficient and effective in both, when the point was going to come, that a change in those, those actual people forming those roles was going to require us to reconfigure and to add some capacity in there. And so our first, our first change in that is Paula Townsend, payroll technician, indicating her intention to retire. And so with that coming up and seeing that on the horizon, I'm really, really appreciative that she has given us the type of notice, warning that she has, so that we can really plan well. And basically what I'm presenting to you is just the need slash the intention to add into that department. Again, there's no job description really, change here. And so we are also kind of find ourselves in that gray area, which we do every once in a while, about is this really an action item, or is this just a visibility transparency thing with endorsement type of scenario? So what we're looking for it again is to, is to add into that payroll function and with the existing job descriptions, and have that funded and embedded budget, and move forward for that.
So are we looking at permanently going to three people?
Yes.
Well, really kind of a, the pair of one ten really isn't a full-time, so it's like really a two and a half kind of position by the time you're done after this year, right?
In the long term, in the long run, though, it would be three, yes. She would retire effective 12/31, she has to take a month off of January, so that would be two, come back, and she wants to come back and either close out the year, or maybe work maybe even towards about this time next year, at which point she would leave completely, and then we want to replace that role, then replace her in that role.
Okay, so we're asking adding a position.
Yes, it is, long-term add.
But the add position would be under the same job description, right?
Yes.
Okay, just so I'm clear. I do think it's good for it to still come forward as an increase in staffing, so that we're monitoring that. So do we want an action item authorizing an increase in staffing? Or do we want, is that?
My sense is, this is obviously, my sense is that it would be, with this transition, it's kind of a neat opportunity for us to sort of use the skills and gifts that all provides later, as we shift from the two person to the three configuration. So I would almost say that it might be wise for us to kind of draft a proposal saying, you know, how it would have been shipped once Paula's finished, or even during the interim time period, yeah, interim time period that she's with us, and then a transitional role, how that could work. So just sort of.
So I'm just sort of, you've warned us about this, not warned us, but you've informed us as board members in our individual conversations that this can come about down the road. So it's not like we don't know that this wasn't going to happen. And I see a great benefit of Paula's experience helping a new person or two as she transitions out.
As one person, to me it seems like the material piece at the board level isn't whether we choose to have someone who's a pair of one ten fill the new position or a new hire, but that we're creating a position, that you need addition to the position. To me, that seems to be the board level piece rather than whether we choose to implement the position with Paula, which I'm perfectly fine with, I'm not trying to throw that under the bus. So I think to me it should just be a, you know, yes, we agree to add an additional position to the payroll department.
Yes.
Because otherwise then you're just coming back and saying, well now if you make it specific to Paula, then when Paula says, guess what, I'm done, you've got to come back again. When, if we've said yes, we agree that you're adding a third position, then you're covered.
Yeah, so just to be clear, I mean, it sounds like some confusion there. We want to, we want to shift payroll from two people to three people. Paula will be one of the three people. But the fact, it's the fact that she is leaving that is really kind of creates the necessity for us to make that transition from two to three.
And is the third person temporary until they're trained so that when she leaves, you'll be back down to two? Or will you always need three?
We're going to need three. And, and, and.
So.
Have to help us when Debbie leaves, we're going to need to go to four because Debbie definitely does the work of two people. So. Right.
The timing is to make sure the third person comes on now before Paula even has to take the one month off.
Right.
However, the material question for the board seems to need to be, are we okay with adding a third position to payroll? And so that to me seems to be the only thing that would need the board approval. Correct?
I agree with that. So you're requesting an additional position or?
Correct. So I think that comes forward just like we have with operations where they've come in ahead of facilities and it gives the same kind of motion and approval and we're good. So you bring that at the October meeting, then you're set to then post an hire.
Yeah, so make you get a back shot of this. Maybe your third person should say.
Correct, okay. So do we all have clarity that you're just bringing an active item to add an additional person to that staff?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
In the Business Officer Report, it's pretty thin actually, this one because end of hiring season, beginning of audit season. And so what I put in there are the presentation pages of the, what I'm working on with the Intercom Committee on School Finance. And tomorrow I'm getting ready to go have my eighteenth and nineteenth one-on-one meetings related to this topic. One in Denver and then to Breckenridge tomorrow to talk about this proposal and what is really kind of morphing into and really, well, last thing I should say, into a nice, I believe viable scenario for school finance. And so I wanted you guys to have a chance to see that, what I've been presenting and discussing there, so. Enjoy that. Couple pages of spreadsheets with lots of numbers that I have, I know you'll really hang on.
In the Operations Report, the only key points is SCAT, little first SCAT session of the year will take place tomorrow. IT contract selection, vendor selection process is well underway. And we'll have some updates on that here in the next morning.
We just finished our open participation cycle for the VOW Annual Survey. We set a target, we promoted that target at Peak View and in the weeks since then, we set a target of ninety percent of all staff participating in that survey. We hit eighty-nine percent, which while world class, still leaves us wanting to work and we have definitely learned some ways that we can work to make the survey more accessible and more relevant for all staff members. But I'm really excited to report to you here, we had ninety-four percent of our first-year teachers complete the survey. That as a system of schools who depend heavily on teacher input and teacher leadership, that's fantastic that our new teachers are coming aboard. Ninety-four percent for our first-year teachers, ninety-six percent for our not first-year teachers. So the veteran teachers in District forty-nine are helping us get better in overwhelming, world-leading numbers. That's not hyperbole, that is a world-class level of participants from your first-line service providers. So could not be more proud of Amy Batezak and Paul Anderson and their leadership as we transition this year to be a provider. I'm also proud of us as a Chief Officer team because by going on a VOW learning tour and going out and doing roundy rollouts and by incorporating feedback from the VOW Annual into our strategic planning, we've demonstrated that we are listening and listening well. So that's an exciting place to be. A lot of other good stuff is going on. You've heard a lot about it. By the time we sit together in this room again, we'll know a little bit more about our Teacher of the Year finalists where we have two out of seven as we talked about before. So good things going on across the district. Really great time to be great in District forty-nine.
For Chief Operating Officer and Brett, with Windows seven not being supported anymore come January, which is only a few months away, we would, if your report you said, you're going to have to upgrade to hardware that could do Windows ten.
As I've been pushing this word out to school principals directly over the span of the last couple of weeks. And TQAM has also been putting out guidance and is going to prepare to put out a little bit more detailed guidance and plan in court. The assessment that I received back from the principals is under issue. Mount start, it really not going to be a problem because we have so few items within the district that we have to, sorry, no, 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 back to previous one.
That was a great, that was awesome.
I have such words.
It's not about the, it's lovely.
We'll be able to move through this pretty quick, but we don't anticipate this to have a major impact at the bottom line.
Remember when Y two K fizzled? Y two one two K. I spent three years preparing a base for that. Okay, are you ready to go on?
Yes, sir.
So annually, the board as part of our leadership model, you evaluate through Chief Officers on a rotating cycle. And so I am in the middle of that rotation. And the way we do this is we gather insight from a multi-rater survey kind of colloquially called a three hundred and sixty degrees survey. It's administered by Employers Council. And you have the results in some detail in your packet. But we also provide some public transparency because we're, we are in the office of the superintendent, the three of us together, and superintendent evaluation is a matter of public business. And so we do it in public in District forty-nine. So as you can see, some of the themes that identify strengths in my evaluation are that I seem to be self-aware because my, my results track fairly closely with the groups that are evaluating me. My domain ratings got a little bit flatter this year from low end to high end. They weren't as polarized or maybe as wide-ranging. And overall, they improved some, but I'll disclaim that in a moment when I explain what I've done to the question set itself. Higher rated behaviors tended to track with leadership functions, particularly public leadership or verbal leadership, expressive leadership functions. There really wasn't a clear pattern of one group that consistently rated me higher than others, but there were some overall patterns that I'll report in. And one that we talked about a year ago is I tended to have lower ratings from principals. They had consistently for three years been the lowest rating, the group that rated me the lowest. And so that was an area of special focus this year. And this year principals were not my lowest rated group. It was actually zone leaders this year. Zone leader's scores did not go down, but principal scores came up. And that was intentional. And we talked about the tension a year ago. If I overemphasized that, then I would probably be neglecting other things. But that was an emphasis. I spent, I had one-on-one meetings with every principal in the spring semester. I am now halfway through, about two-thirds of the way through, having one-on-one meetings with every principal to start the year. And I'll do that again. And I think it's helping me be more aware of what is happening in our schools and the challenges our principals face. So I think that's overall a positive and it seems to be reflected in the ratings this year. Lower rated items continue to be around my nature as not a deliberative strategic planner and project manager. I am proud that even my lower rated items still average above a four on a scale out of five. But I acknowledge that those are areas I continue to need either to develop myself or to find complementary structures or complementary colleagues that can help me be more deliberative and more strategic and thoughtful in my planning. Strategic is not the same as cerebral. I'm always kind of cerebral cognitive. That's not the same as thinking strategically about the implications and about who needs to know. So I continue to work on growing as a manager of projects. And although for a sixth year, my lowest rated item was the statement that I am careful not to over-initiate the organization, I am proud that it is my highest point on that item in four years. So even on my worst item, I'm showing some growth. The trend is in the right direction. The achievement level is still pretty low. You see some of the comments, themes, I won't elaborate on those. But the comment themes track pretty well with the scores. And then there's a, there's a little bit of extra insight around the importance of making sure people who are impacted by decisions are aware of those decisions or included in those decisions. So I think this is part of why I have been emphatic advocate for something called the RACI framework, which is an acronym for who is responsible, who is accountable, who is consulted, and who is informed. And we're increasingly using this in our C-three communications tool that we give out to principals. But we're also using it in our Service and Leadership Team at the district level, our Business, Operations, and Education Office Leadership Teams where we're trying to make sure we understand who's actually doing the work responsible, who is accountable for the work and has the right to veto or approve accountable, who needs to be consulted before the fact, C, consulted, and then who needs to be informed about the decision is I. So RACI is an acronym I hope you'll hear us using as we go forward. The report goes into extensive, somewhat mind-numbing detail as you go through. But I will only stop on this page, which is the overview page. I'm sorry, this does not align perfectly the way the graphs and the numbers. On my own, I had to just draw thirty lines across. You see some averages out of five. You see quite a few of my overall averages are in the mid-fours. Frankly, it's not substantively different from past years. It has improved over the last two years. But part of that improvement may be due to a sheet that I submitted to you, which is in this year, working with Mr. Anderson, we changed the question set to align more closely with the Baldridge framework categories. And as a result, we took out some of the items on which I had historically scored lower. So this may be an artifact of a changed question set. It creates a new baseline and should the board invite me to continue to serve another year, then we'll be able to compare year over year and it will be the same items. Are there any questions that I can answer in this setting? I know that this is part of the process and then he'll have feedback for me in an executive session and I'll answer more questions there. But if there are any clarifications that I can provide or were answering any of the questions, I'm pleased to do so.
Questions, gentlemen, for now? I may have questions later, but not right now. So thank you.
Okay.
All right, and that is our last item. So we are, thank you guys.